And then our opening remarks will be given by Jack.
Will the audience please arrive?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're very, very thankful, Father, to be citizens of Pleasant Grove. Our happy and good community here in the foothills of the mountains. Father, we're very thankful for our good citizens who serve on this council. For them doing the very best that they know how to guide our city in a proper manner with integrity and love for their community. Father, our hearts go out to the citizens of our city who are struggling and their families and their family situations. Our heart also goes out to the citizens of Paris. Bless them as they pick up the pieces from the evil that has been done among them. We pray that in our behaviors, we will find the strength within ourselves to be kind and respectful to others. Even though we may not understand their backgrounds and their feelings, may we be kind to one another. And may we continue to support our city employees who are doing their best to serve us. They're good people. We're blessed to have them. Now bless us in this meeting this night that we might have Thy Spirit to be here, to be in each of our hearts, that we might be kind and do the business of the city in a pleasant and responsible way. These blessings we humbly thank Thee for, Father, in the name of Thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ.
Okay, if you're just joining us, I don't know how many are in the hall. We took a poll here and several people are here just to hear the election results. Some are here to just hear the accessory apartments. Then others are here just to be here or have another item on the agenda. So we're gonna adjust the agenda. And if we get too crowded when we get going here, we're gonna adjourn the meeting in this room and head over to the firebase where they're working on setting up a place for us. They actually asked me to do it earlier, so I think they were. Okay, on tonight's agenda then, what are the changes that we wanna make?
Here, we've actually discussed moving the election results to item 9A and switching that with the public hearing for accessory apartments because it'll probably be a shorter agenda item. So that would be moving 10A to 9A.
Absolutely. 10B, I think also.
Yeah, there's been a request in the 10B board.
Okay, so we'll move them up to right before 9A.
Yeah.
Okay, any other changes?
There's been a request, I believe, for the executive session, which was there on the agenda.
Okay, we'll do that right after the calendar. We also need to move item 10C to December 1st. So are you gonna continue it?
Yeah, it's the wireless.
Any other? Personnel. Okay, entertain a motion for those changes in the agenda.
Entertain a motion to increase tonight's agenda with the motion to move agenda items 10A and B to be considered before agenda item 9A, adding an executive session for personnel reasons and removing item 10C to December 1st meeting.
Okay, a second. Okay, so we have a motion by Sid and a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on the consent items, we have the aid vouchers and the minutes.
We don't have a concession card for that?
I'm sorry, I approved full concession and I skipped it. Yes, that'd be great. Let's just finish the consent items and we'll do full concession. Any discussion on the consent? I'll entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion to improve the consent agenda items.
Okay, we have a motion by Sid and a second by Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll now have an open session. For those that have just joined and they're still in the halls, hopefully you can hear. If you're here for the accessory apartment discussion, we're going to do that after we take care of items 10A and 10B. Oh, excuse me. Before 9A. And then we're going to get into the accessory apartments after 10A and 10B. And we may need to move into the firebase where they're currently working on setting up the sound system and chairs.
Oh, we haven't started setting that up. You want us to start setting?
Can you pull that trigger, please? Okay, so we'll have an open session now. If anyone's here to discuss an item that's not on the agenda or that's on the agenda and is not a public hearing item, please come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody. Lisa Liddard, 1095 East Canyon View Lane. And yes, we own it now. Somebody said, "What's that up with? It's belonged to you." Question for you guys. Last week during city council, there was a section where, when we were talking about the Prop 1 and it was brought up, I think Sid brought it up, and said that there was a confusion on it. And when she, and I'll read what was said, but I'm the one that had written an article about it and I put the links to both these resolutions on it. So I spent the last week going through, typing up the word for word from the council meetings back in January. And then there was one in March and then there was a couple in June. And so I thought, I better find, better, I need to have you clarify, if that's okay. I'll read what you said and then, so you remember. And then clarify to me, because I'm wondering if I missed something. So, when Diana was talking, she said at the very beginning when we were talking about these two new taxes increasing for road funds, we approved a version of a resolution without the UTA component and I'm surprised that the UTA version was put on the ballot. And then Sid said, "Speaking of UTA, there is confusion on how the council voted on Prop 1 earlier this summer. We voted to give the people a chance to vote on Prop 1 by asking the county to put it on the ballot, and we voted to remove the UTA component." That was not what was relayed to the public. And for the record, I just wanna correct, correct, and then I couldn't hear what was said after that. I don't know what ended it. Tell me what you mean by that, if, so I can see. No, 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 yeah.
About five months ago, so.
I know, it's okay.
So what I was referring to was back in June, we discussed Prop 1. What I, what I maintain the intent of, at least my vote and seniority council except for Ben, who voted differently, was that we wanted to vote to give the people a chance to put it on the ballot and not support UTA funding portion of Prop 1. We wanted more money to come back to the local municipalities. So I have to go back and review exactly what happened.
When I read the resolution that was finished, there was talk about taking the UTA component out of the resolution, but it wasn't voted that way. And the resolution, they're still on the website, actually, in three different places. And it hasn't been changed, that second resolution, the 2015 O2O is what it's called.
On the city website?
Mm-hmm, and it's in three places. There's the staff report is the same, then it's also in the minute notes. It's attached there. And then there's a place on the website that has resolutions on one page and for everyone that we've done this year. And it's, they're all the same and none of them. No.
Dana, can you comment on this, please?
Well, all I can comment on is that I prepared one, striking that meeting. There were two suggestions that were made.
Okay.
And so that's what should have been included. So I don't know what's posted. I think Kathy will have to probably go back to go back and see what the specific should have been.
Okay.
But I do remember, if you'll remember, you were probably here.
Yeah.
And he instructed us to, we talked about it one week and they instructed staff to make those changes, to remove the language of support for the UTA portion. Then there was one.
And then MAG happened. I think the mayor went to MAG. I was there with you. Things changed because the mayors voted. You came back. But then at the beginning of that meeting, you had said in there, some, I think the mayor said, "Did you strike?" I actually have it in here, but I'll use my memory here. You had said, "Did you strike the UTA component?" And you said, "Yes." You did. You said, "Yes, I did." But then as it went through, it wasn't, it got talked about a completely different way and redone a different way. So will you check? Okay, thanks. And then the links that I had to the resolutions, when I put it out in the summer, I linked straight to those two resolutions so people could read them. So if there's a different one?
We probably ought to get that corrected.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
If we correct it on our end and your links are still active, they should point to the same document.
They should. And then I went back in, though, this week too, and I looked to see if anything, if the links. But then I went and searched the city website and they're still the same. So I don't know if there was another resolution or.
There should have been another resolution, striking that section.
Striking the UTA? Okay, because I didn't find it. So we, well, maybe we can talk about it next week or something.
No, that's really helpful, actually, because it's during this last month. It's been brought to my attention that we are on record as a city council for having supported the proposition with the UTA component. And I think the minutes reflect that we did not support.
It was very confusing as I went back through it. And so I can see where, because it would go one way and I can see it. And I was like, okay, I was sat in there and that, and it was all over the place, so.
We apologize.
Yeah, so that would be great. Thank you.
So if there's anyone else that would like to speak on an item that's not a public hearing or not on the, not part of the agenda, please state your name and address for the record.
I will. My name's Clifford Sorensen and I live at 1710 Black Hawk Circle, or MPG. Actually, I came with one point, but I picked up a second in the process of doing my research. I came across an old Deseret News article from December of 2012. And at the point, PG was actually the 12th most indebted city in Utah in absolute terms, not relative terms. And if you look at the ratio of income to debt, I would, I kinda ran it through my head. I can do all the calculations for all the cities they looked at. But I would guess Pleasant Grove is probably in the top one, two, or three. We have about $2.50 to $3.00 worth of debt for every dollar of income we have. That's just an aside, as I was, after the elections were over, I started going through the campaign contributions and the list. They're a little bit confusing, I think. Somebody from the city might have gone through them and checked them before they were published. But one of the things that struck me is the extraordinarily high amount of money that was donated by real estate interests. One of our candidates took almost 86% of her campaign funding from real estate interests. Another took 80%. And one who isn't here tonight, I think, took around 75%. And given that real estate interests are so important in this town, I think it's just important to ask the people who, in fact, took that money to, I would personally prefer to see them recuse themselves when real estate questions came up. But that's probably impossible, but I think they should be identified in any conversation. And I'm referring to Sid, as I looked at your figures, you took 86% of your donations came from real estate. And Eric, I think, was, he was one just over 80%. And then Lynn Walkers was about 65%. And the big donors were the Utah Central Association of Realtors, the Fugals, St. John's, and then PG United, which actually turns out to be a pack of real estate people. They had $2,400. Of the $2,400, $2,000 was put in by the Fugal Corporation, which makes them rival the Association of Realtors. I guess that's the big donors for this election.
Pat, did you happen to check who the main donor was for the PG3? Because he's a builder here in Pleasant Grove. So if we're gonna consider the.
Well, you know, I looked at the winners rather than the losers because the losers aren't gonna be voting in council election.
If we're gonna consider the campaign, though, the big donor for the PG3 is a builder here in Pleasant Grove. I'll tell you about the Utah Realtors Association. We actually have a couple of members of that association here tonight. And if you have questions, we can speak to them. They actually interviewed candidates from all over the county and for every election. The PG3 candidates were also, actually, every candidate in our race was interviewed. And they selected candidates they felt represented homeowners across Pleasant Grove. They aren't Realtors specifically that are selling land. They just represent homeownership and rentals and a lot of different things in the city.
Yeah, no, as a voter, I felt that I actually represented my homeowner interest probably better than a real estate association. But again, this is not to question anybody's honesty. I'm sure the members who were elected are as honest as anybody in the room. But there's also a matter of appearances. You know, I was a management officer for State Department for many years. And in government, when you handle money, you have to be, as I say, purer than Caesar's wife, as the old saying goes. And I know in government, to receive this much money would actually exclude you from an action related to any kind of real estate thing. It would. I was there, I'm sorry. I served as a professional management officer for years and the limits on what you can take from people you deal with in contracts were extreme, extreme. I was there. I did it. I was a senior officer when I retired. I know what I'm talking about. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I just think that in any time, any time when we're dealing with this kind of real estate issue, I think the people who've received so much money from real estate associations, there's four major donors in here, should at least be known. The citizens who are listening to the discussion should be aware that half the city council has received most of its donations from real estate associations. And I think that is something that people should be aware of, simply in the matter of clarity. That's all I have to say.
But I'd like to be clarified because this is, this is a serious claim that you're making accusation.
No, it's not a claim.
No, it is.
It's actual number on the paper.
Well, it is, but I think that some people were upset because they didn't get the funding and weren't interviewed. And others who, they believe in us as candidates, they've found campaign donations are not unusual. And you could say that about a private citizen, you could say that about a business, you could say that about anyone who donated to campaigns. So campaign funding is not unusual. We disclosed the amount.
Would you like me to go back up?
Yes, I would, because I think the claim that you're making is, it does question our integrity. And I would like to address that, to say, I did not do anything wrong. It is not illegal to run as a public with money from an organization. This group of Utah Realtors is a very, they're open, they have a board to interview each candidate. And they're very open. In fact, I'm trying to find statements from Jared Oldroyd. In fact, he's right here, and let me read this, what he sent to us, because I was concerned after I saw China threatening us and trying to accuse us of unethical activities. Let me read you what he put. Ucar, the Utah County Association of Realtors, is a non-profit organization that serves real estate professionals that live and work in 13 counties in Utah. As business owners, we care about public policy because we recognize that decisions made at the local, state, and federal level impact our pockets, budgets, and families. We work in partnership with communities to protect private property rights and promote a robust economy. A strong economy allows families to buy and sell real estate and reach the American dream. Homeownership is the key to building wealth and studies demonstrate that homeownership is the backbone of the economy. It would be unwise of real estate professionals to ignore government, especially at the local level, when the real estate is your profession and politics and your business. They support homeownership, they support private property rights. And.
No, those are wonderful things. I have nothing else to say. I think it's a matter of simple transparency. As I stated openly, I stated openly that I think the members who were elected were as honest as anybody else in the room. So this does not stand as an accusation against your honesty. It's a matter of transparency.
And we provided that.
And I will also point out that Newport was not necessarily the biggest donor, the Fugal Corporation, through PG United and through its own donations, rivals.
Exactly.
It does.
So I just want, I would like to make.
Sorry, I just went through the figures. I spent hours going through them. PG United had $2,400. To spend $2,000 of those dollars came from the Fugal Corporation.
And every candidate had donations.
They did. And I agree. I say it as a beginning, it's a matter of transparency. There will be a lot of discussion of. I've got the documents, I did, and I looked at them. And I suspect a lot of people have it. It's just a matter that people should know that there were very, very strong real estate influences from a couple of very large groups in this election. It's not illegal. Utah does not have any limitations whatsoever on campaign donations in any amount or in any percentage. So if that's what you're suggesting, I'm implying I'm not.
I would like to also make a comment. This has been going on for years.
When you say this, what are you referring to?
Donations from this organization, this nonprofit organization has been going on. I probably believe the mayor in his time of election, myself, Ben, all of it. Everyone that has probably run for office, as Sid said, they interview all the candidates in every city.
Well, you're focusing on one group. There were four major donors. And again, I don't object to anybody participating. I donated myself. The objection is to simply a lack of transparency. I don't think a lot of people spend a lot of time going through the donation sheets. In fact, I would guess most of the people in this room have not. The ones from PG United are particularly hard to find because you gotta chase around through the Utah state government. And they were major donors as well. As I said, there were four major real estate donors, not just the one. And I merely bring this up.
But you're not a particular person, citizens. And Mr. Sorensen, this is available if we could be transparent. I reported every penny that I received as I required to by law.
Yes, you do. I've got it right in front of me.
Through the website. So when you see a lack of transparency, that's not accurate. And you are going into a question, our integrity, right here and now. And I'm telling you, there was nothing dishonest, at least, and not on my part. I did everything to the penny that's transparent on the website.
It is exactly so as you say. And I never accused you of any wrongdoing.
I think that's why you're standing.
I merely said, in the interest of transparency, people should realize that a significant portion of the campaign finance came from real estate donors.
That's not.
And that's all I have to say.
Christie Belt, 266 East. I don't know if the water person's in here. Are they in here or did they leave? Who's in charge of water?
Yeah, Marty's, he'll be here in a minute.
Marty's out.
I just wanna say thank you. I know you guys probably get beat up sometimes. I just went from spending an oodle, and I won't tell you how much water, city water, I've been wasting. But they helped me find a leak in my yard. It was culinary water leaking out into my yard. So I paid for every cent, every half gallon that I've wasted. But they came out on Saturdays. I didn't know there were, on the call, on-call Saturday, water guys. They're fabulous. They came out twice. They helped us figure it out. They've been, and earlier this year, someone else came out. I just wanna say, they've been so helpful to us this year. We're saving a lot of money now. Thank you. We need it. But I just wanted publicly to thank the water people for helping just everyday Joe citizens like me. Thanks.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the council in an open session?
Blaine Thatcher, 120 North, 1400 East. We've gotten off to a rousing start already. This is, Pleasant Grove is at a crossroads. Last week, I took the opportunity to speak a little bit about the divide in our city. And the fact that we have an opportunity, I believe, to remove or to help remove that divide. Already in open session, we've had a couple of items discussed that appear to me to be examples of items that are continuing to foster this divide. And I think we need to discuss these just a little bit. With reference to the correcting of the record last week in city council meeting with information that appears to be false, I think is quite concerning. When you look at what was actually voted upon in the resolution to support Proposition 1, I think it's very clear what you were aware of, what you knew, and what you actually voted on. Most of our city leaders were counting on the tax increase from Proposition 1 to provide more money for road funding here. The Lynn Walker, Eric Jensen, and Sid Lamone campaigns all campaigned on Proposition 1 being part of their plan to fix our roads. To try and correct the record about your support for Proposition 1 as written, I believe is a deception to the people of Pleasant Grove. This kind of deception is not becoming of our city leaders and I believe must stop. There is a widening credibility gap with our appointed and elected officials. Last year, most people in Pleasant Grove realized that the Public Safety Building proposal was outrageously expensive. We were told over and over through the year that this was the only way to solve these needs. And we were also told that it was the most cost-effective way to solve these needs. This was simply not true. You have considerable information currently in your hands that shows multiple options to completely meet our public safety needs at a fraction of the cost proposed last year. These examples of creating the credibility gap, these are examples of creating the credibility gap and are actions that are creating and, I believe, perpetuating the divide. I feel obligated to point this out and to make the case for and plead for a different course of action. Why would we want to continue down this path and further divide our city? We do not have to continue to take this path. There is another way. We can be completely honest with the citizens. We can live within our means. We can operate in a cost-efficient manner. We can meet our needs in this city without raising taxes. I plead with our administrators and our elected leaders, choose to change course. Choose to actually represent the citizens in an open and honest manner. We cannot afford to go down the path of other agendas. Please recognize that most people in the city want our elected officials to be honest with us. Want the city to live within its means. Want our city to operate in a cost-efficient manner. Most citizens do not want their taxes raised. Most citizens want less regulation and more protection of our liberties. The citizens of Pleasant Grove implore our leaders to take stock of the election results and look closely at the methods used by our leaders to retain power. This is a fragile result. If you continue down this path, it will likely not end well. We call for you to be responsive to our citizens. We say unequivocally, there is another way. You have the option to show true leadership, to lead by implementing true and correct principles. Please embrace the principles of honesty and integrity, the principle of liberty, and the principle of living within our means. We have enough revenues to meet our needs here in Pleasant Grove. Please live within those revenues. If we follow the path we are on and continue to do things that divide us as a city, the divide will only widen and we will develop a deeper and deeper mistrust for our government and our leaders. This is not what the citizens of Pleasant Grove want. Citizens want to trust their leaders. If you change course, the divide will disappear rapidly. If you change course, the divide will disappear rapidly. You could be considered heroes for dissolving the divide. You could take credit for restoring cost-efficient operation of a wonderful city. Please choose to change course. Choose to help remove the divide. Choose to represent the citizens. Choose to live within our means. Choose not to increase our taxes and please choose to protect our liberty. Thank you.
Emily Varney, 1756 North, 390 West. I just want to go on record to say that Blaine Thatcher does not represent my view as a citizen. And I feel like the vote and the election stands on its own and that that result indicates what the majority of Pleasant Grove citizens want. I appreciate the integrity of the candidate 2-1 and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Would anyone else like to speak during the open session?
So I did bring a Snickers to give away. And it says "Feisty." It's kind of what I'm filling in. And I was going to give it to Dion because it's a shout-out to him because the bathrooms look fabulous at the rec center.
Do you have a name and address?
Molly Andrew, 1125 Sage Drive. Anyway, this is a shout-out to Dion, and I'll get that to him when it comes. My first note is, I am a citizen of Pleasant Grove and Blaine Thatcher doesn't represent my opinion either. And when we talk about the road of going down the public safety, the committee really hasn't reached a decision yet. And we are exploring several, several different options. And if anybody wants to attend, the RFPs come back tomorrow. They're back. We've already looked at them and we'll discuss them tomorrow. And that might be a great opportunity to have a voice also. They're open meetings to the citizens. And just know that a decision has not been made on that. So also, PG United is not a group of realtors. We donated $423.37 to each campaign. And we use that other money to do service projects and other things. Brandon Fugel did donate that $2,000 to PG United. I am a housewife. I am a preschool teacher. I'm a mom. I am not a realtor. Drew is the only realtor on PG United that serves with us. So...
Did I show you the figures?
I have the figures. I turned them in. Thank you. Anyway, answering for Sid and Eric and Lynn to the Realtors Association, I don't think in general, just because they're the winners, you want to know who they're going to answer to. If PG3 had won, are you aware of who they would answer to?
I know their largest donation was $250.
Their largest donation was Knight West at $1,993.50. Utah Valley Home Builders was $1,500. St. John Properties was $1,500. Cooney Landscaping was $1,126. And Frank Anderson was $995.31. And those were those.
I could move these together as well and come up with something.
If we could...
You could, but they didn't run together. Dion's not back. I would give it to him. Anyway. That's all I have. I just want to correct that. I'm not going to sit and let everything go this time.
Thanks.
Thanks.
If anyone has a question, would like to look this up. At the top of the June 6, 2015 council meeting minutes, page 14, first paragraph. Lastly, when the matter was discussed, Attorney Peterson was instructed to remove the portion stating that the city was supportive of it being included on the November 215 election ballot. And this is talking specifically about the UTA portion, or it should have said the UTA portion. So I can see where the confusion is coming from in reference to what Blaine is saying. And so I'm going to ask that we go back and take a look at that and make the corrections to those minutes to reflect on the audio. Thank you.
Yes. Carl Cooney, 2115 North Crestwood Boulevard. I am the owner of Cooney Landscaping. I was a large donor for PG3. And I would like to state... Sorry, I'm furious. I would just like to state on the record that I was not running for city council and that the PG3 were not beholden to me. I would like to publicly state on the record that every time I heard a rumor created by a female incumbent candidate that regarded me or my company, my company donated. And if we would like that to continue, my company will continue to donate. Thank you very much.
No. You know, I've sat quiet most of this campaign. But when someone gets up and questions my integrity and honesty as a human being and a person, that's when I start having a problem. I don't even know, you're talking about that I questioned your landscaping campaign. Carl, I won't even get into some of the things that happened because I do have integrity and I'm not even going to go there. But when people from the public stand up in a public meeting with this many people here and go on record questioning my integrity, I'm very frustrated and I'm very hurt right now.
I didn't use your name.
I'm a... You said a female incumbent. I mean, only one. Come on. That was a cheap shot. And I'm tired of the cheap shot that have been taken at me and my family for the past six months. And I think you know exactly what I'm talking about. And I'll tell you what, I'm not going to sit here and be called dishonest.
I just defended my company in response to Amy. I just defended my company in response to Amy.
But you don't even get up and take a cheap shot at me. I didn't say anybody's coming.
She stood up and mentioned my name at the pulpit.
She did, not me. It's Molly.
So I defended my name at the pulpit. I defended my name at the pulpit.
No, Mary, because we asked Molly to sit down. So if we're going to ask Molly to sit down, let's ask some of the people to sit down.
I remember asking her to sit down.
No, you said, "Let's move on."
I did not say, "Let's move on."
You said, "Why don't we just get back?" And you kind of redirected her.
Yeah, I redirected it to speak to the council.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. I realize that we're...
You know, I thought tonight would be a night where we can really start healing and coming together. But we get up and the first comment is accusations about campaign financing. But we've disclosed every penny. I really thought tonight, I thought this. Be the changers to see the world. I thought we'd start out on a positive note tonight. Coming together, talking about the divide that Mr. Thatcher said, that's why I brought this. We are far from that because of what's happened tonight. But I will not sit here and be called dishonest and have my integrity questioned. I won't do that. For the open session, I usually sit here quiet. I listen. I write down my notes. If I need to respond, who's at present, I will. But I will not sit here and do that. I've been through this in the past four years and especially the last six months with a certain group of people in our city. Me and my family have to sit here and be quiet. I'm not going to do it anymore. This is what I was hoping for tonight. Be the changers to see the world. You know, it might not happen on world level, but I sure as heck hope it will happen in Pleasant Grove. I know we can change Pleasant Grove. I know we can be better, but not with what's going on here tonight. And I'm disappointed and sad that I thought it would start tonight. I really did.
I asked for it a year ago.
I've been asking for it for the last two years. And I thought tonight was different.
I just clarified why I donated what I donated.
But then you took a cheap shot at me. Why would you take that?
Because I stated the truth.
I thought you were thinking about your company.
I stated the truth.
This is unreal. I thought we could start, but you know what? Well, this was...
Start us out. You were elected and you're going to be here for the next four years along...
Yes. My name is Drew Armstrong. I live at 995 East Center Street. I'm a real estate broker. And I don't expect anything from you any different than any other citizen will expect from you, except the same thing that you've always given us, which is honesty and integrity. I appreciate that. I was worried about that. I made a couple of calls. I donate usually about $500 a year to our real estate PAC funds out of my own family's income. That's not tax deductible or anything. And after 20 years of doing that every year, I decided I would hope that a little bit of it had come home. And I'm glad that all the candidates came and interviewed. And I hope that candidates in the future will also come and interview. They didn't interview with me. That committee changes every year with all the Realtors that are involved. Now, I am one of the members of PG United. We've been together for a little over a year and kind of put ourselves together just because we're concerned citizens. I am the only Realtor member of PG United. And I did give pretty extensively out of my own pocket. But I am the only Realtor that's a member of PG United. I did personally go and ask Brandon to support the trustworthy candidates that I wanted to serve. And I went and I collected that check in my pocket and I brought it back and we put it in the bank and spent it as a group the way we felt that it should be spent, as our legally registered pick, actually. Back... PAC. Okay, yeah, we got it under a PAC. So if you guys want to run again and you do as good a job as you've done for the past four years, come talk to me some more and I'll see what I can do. So I appreciate the work that you've done. I appreciate your integrity. I'm not going to say the same thing 15 times over and over again because it doesn't change that. I really do appreciate getting to know the city better and paying a lot of attention the last couple of years. I realize that there are some mistakes that are made. I appreciate you acknowledging those, Sid. You know, I appreciate you saying, "No, I think we could do this better." Because the thing is, is that if you're always so worried about what people are going to say or whether they question you or look for any discrepancy someplace, I understand those discrepancies need to be corrected because we want the record to be accurate. But I know you by your reputation. I've watched you pretty carefully here and I appreciate the work that you've done very much. And I am not going to ask you for anything that anybody else wouldn't ask you for. And I don't think any of the other Realtors are going to ask you for anything different. There are, by the way, there are more than 200 Realtors in Pleasant Grove. Over 200 of us. So, I mean, you know, everybody says, "Well, there's one on every block." There probably is. So we appreciate your work and I appreciate the fact that all of the candidates, as far as I'm aware, came and interviewed with the Utah Central Association of Realtors. And we don't represent just Utah County. We represent 13 counties. And we take our own money out of our own pockets. It's not some big Coldwell banker. This is personal money. It all goes into those PAC funds. And we spread it around. And when we see a need, a specific need someplace, some year, we'll put it there, not because we're trying to pull off some gigantic development out in the Grove. I have never done any development in Pleasant Grove yet. And maybe I will in the future. I have no idea. So, thank you.
Anyone else want to address the council in open session?
Is that Kenny Barlow says "Feisty"? It is. Do you want to say this?
Blaine Thatcher. This is an interesting spin being put on the campaign contributions. And I think it just is important for everyone here to understand that the contributions made by the Realtors Association and the level of contributions of other Realtors in this campaign was a dramatic, dramatic departure from what has happened typically in previous elections here. The volume that was contributed by Realtors to one side in this campaign is markedly different than in any previous year. So all the Realtors can stand up and tell us something otherwise. But the fact of the matter is that a citizen from Pleasant Grove pointed out what is clearly a very, very significant portion of contributions made to three candidates for city council here. And it's also being pointed out that tonight on the agenda is discussion of an item, the accessory apartment issue, which is very well-known that the Utah Central Association of Realtors has a vested interest in. And they have expressed much interest in this. So I find it very interesting, the vociferous refutation here of any influence peddling at all. The numbers speak for themselves and there is very significant question about how people will vote on this council when it comes to matters of real estate. We also have very, very significant influence of Realtors on our planning commission that are helping influencing policy decisions here. So people in this room need to be aware of some of these facts. Also, I would like to state about Proposition 1, again, the fact that there may or may not have been an error in what was actually drafted in the resolution is really somewhat of a moot point because this body voted for a resolution which said, "Our city supports Proposition 1 as written and will encourage the citizens of Pleasant Grove to vote in favor of it." Okay? So to say that we were only in favor of it without support for UTA or mass transit funding is just disingenuous.
Anyone else? Let's just try to be a little civil and we don't want to really get into a physical fight or anything here. So just kind of...
I'm not here to fight. This election was not about winning or losing. It was about our city. So... Oh, sorry. Steve Swayze, 1141 North, 300 East. Obviously, my representatives lost. Their principles were what I liked, but I'll be the first on that side to say I have an open invitation. Forty-nine percent of the citizens voted against U3. So that's half the city. So they have something to say too. I simply want to invite you to come talk to me if you want to hear what the other half of the city wants to say. Because there's obviously a divide. So, simple as that. The past is behind us. And if we want to move forward, the divide will have to be solved. Otherwise, every election, we'll go through the same crap. Every time you try to do something, it's the same crap. So let's make some allies and not enemies. That's all I can say.
Okay? Anyone else? All right. Appreciate those who have taken their opportunity as an American citizen to express yourself. Sometimes we don't want to hear what people have to say, but that is not the country that we live in. People in this country are allowed to speak their mind more than once if they choose to. And thank you for being brief. We only took 45 minutes on that item. So, but it was important to you and that's the key. So we're going to go ahead and close the open session and come back up here. We have no appointments for boards and commissions tonight. No presentations. We're going to move now to item 10A as was outlined in the agenda. Item 10A is to consider for adoption a reservation, 2015-038, authorizing the mayor and municipal council, sitting as the board canvassers, to accept the election returns and declaring and certifying the results of the general election held on November 3, 2015, and providing for effective... Kathy?
I am casting out the official canvas results from the county council to get our election this year.
Do we have this to put out to the citizens? Do you have it in the email? Do you want to send it to me? Maybe send it today.
Yeah, maybe send it today.
Can you switch it from there? This is how government works.
Now, you're much too efficient.
Slowly?
Well, deliberately, as the people in the country reach different levels of understanding and desires, sometimes there's what appears to be conflict. And the beauty of the US is hopefully if it doesn't turn into what you see happen in other countries like Egypt or... like Egypt or other places where there's violence in the streets and top-level governments. We've got to get it formed here. But yeah, we are allowed to get together and disagree. That's part of the American process of the national journey. The ability to speak and freedom of speech. Sorry. American nightmare. Well, the country is still the envy of the world, so I think we've got something. Okay, if you want to direct your attention up here, um, I believe these are the same numbers that Kathy has added to the calendar. And so, Kathy, if you want to go ahead and walk us through, as long as that's correct.
So, um, information back to the county. Total precincts reported in fourteen, so five, so, total votes were fifteen thousand two sixty-one. Jaylen Walker received two thousand one hundred and eighty votes. Eric Jensen, two thousand seven hundred and five. Don Paz, two thousand four hundred fifty-seven. Sid Lamone, two thousand six hundred twenty-one. Wayne Thatcher, two thousand four hundred ninety-six. Matt Godsy, two thousand three hundred and sixty-two. And then on Prop One, um, same precincts, fourteen, fourteen votes cast for. It's one thousand eight hundred and forty and against is two thousand three hundred and two. So, looks like a little anticlimactic. I know.
So, there's been no change since the, since the election results?
So, this shows, um, per precinct, how many early voting voters, MCT voters, and petition voters. Um, I don't have per precinct, I mean, vote. Don't count yet, but soon as I get that. So Kathy, the number on here was thirty-three percent, point five four of the population voted in this election. Is that correct, a Pleasant Grove citizen? So, registered voters, there's fifteen thousand six hundred and five cards cast, which is thirty-three. There's five thousand two thirty-four, which is thirty-three point two percent, which is higher than general election for the six years I've had here, so.
That's, uh, registered votes, yeah. All right. Any questions or discussion? Okay, now entertain a motion on Resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero three eight.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adopt Resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero three eight, authorizing you and the city councils, sitting as the board of canvassers, to accept the election returns and declaring and certifying the results of the general election held on November third. Declaring the winners to be Eric Jensen, Sid Lamone, and Jaylen Walker.
Okay, we have one.
And a proposition. Oh, and Proposition One failed by sixty-four point two three percent.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana by voice, Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Okay, voting is unanimous. Congratulations and thank you to everyone who put this in. Okay, if, if you were only here for the embassy part of the open session, you're welcome. You don't have to. You're welcome to, if they clear some chairs so that the other people who are standing in the hall. All right, there are some chairs in here now. If you'd like to come in, there's probably ten chairs. Is there anyone else in the hall that would like to come in?
There's chairs.
There's, uh, ten chairs here.
Ten chairs?
Yeah, there are ten chairs. And if we could, those that might be blocking what should be a hall or an exit, please move over and let's move those chairs out of the way so we don't have a problem with our fire marshal. He was not in the room. Um, just, you start. Thank you, I'm sorry. No one else in the halls? Okay, this is that we do not need to move. All right, we're going to move to Item Ten B, to consider for a request by Murphy's Express for a site plan approval for a twelve-hundred-square-foot convenience store with an eight-pump fuel station, operated twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, selling beer and tobacco on the property located at approximately sixteen seventy-nine West State Street in the Grove Commercial Zone. And the way this is listed, I, I guess we're just specifically calling out beer and tobacco, but that's not the only items that we're selling?
No. It was just, uh, an effort to be transparent with the types of products that could be sold there. But of course, it's a convenience store with all types of convenience store-type food products, food and drink. Okay, so, uh, Murphy Oil is located, or their, Murphy's Express, uh, will be located in front of the new Walmart grocery store on State Street, uh, on the west end of State Street, west end of town. Uh, the site is shown here, is currently vacant, uh, but we'll take up that whole pad. Uh, you've got right, the new sixteen fifty West Street that goes down to the apartments and condos on the east side of that pad. And then Walmart is, uh, down below it in this area. So, it is zoned, uh, in the Grove Commercial Sales Sub District, so it is a permitted use. There's a visual of the, uh, the canopy and the small building that will be underneath it, as well as eight pumps, uh, something very similar that you have seen in other locations. It has gone forward to our design review board and they did make some modifications to this. So, it reflected, uh, the mountain theme, which means more rock and wood and shingle-type features. And those things have been added to this. Uh, previously, it was a big band of red that they wanted to do on their canopy, but we did bring it to match more the mountain theme of the architecture. So, this is a bird's eye view of the site plan, just showing the canopy and the, the building right here in the middle. And so, there will be drive access, uh, from off of sixteen fifty South Street and all through there and then going back into the drive that goes into Walmart. Uh, so two ways, oh, three ways to get into it. Yes, uh, so State Street would be through this drive, uh, this way or down onto six fifty, the State Street up there. So, then you got, uh, the requirements for landscaping going all the way around the front and the side here. Uh, there's a dip in the width requirement here, but as provided for in the code, they've made up for it. So, there's an average of twenty-five feet of landscaping surrounding it with berms. So, there's just a view of the landscape plan. It does currently meet the requirements of the code and we recommend approval. Uh, Planning Commission reviewed this at their last meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
Hey, questions? See how the.
Do you want to say anything, sir? No, okay. Unless you guys have questions.
Are you, are you, um, applicant representative or the?
Uh, representative.
Okay.
You tell us like how many you have in the city of Utah or just around there?
Uh, yeah, I'm Grant Dennis. My, uh, address is fourteen thirty West Peachtree Street Northwest, and that's in Atlanta, Georgia. Currently in Utah, we don't have. So, this will be the first printed one. I don't know that it'll be the first one built, but it will be the first permitted one.
We understand you went through, um, quite a few accommodations to, uh, design criteria for the area.
Yes, we did. And it, it's something I feel like it made the store a lot better. Um, and I think it's going to be a highlight to the community, so.
We, we appreciate you coming to town and also accommodating requests.
Certainly, certainly.
Welcome to the town, welcome to Pleasant Grove.
Well, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the next motion, Mayor, that we approve the request of Murphy's Express for a site plan approval for a twelve-hundred-square-foot convenience store with an eight-pump fuel station, operated twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and selling alcohol, tobacco, and bubble gum.
I'll second that.
At sixteen seventy-nine West State Street in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Sub District.
Okay, motion by Ben, second by Eric by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. And you sell a lot of whatever you sell.
When is expected that construction is going to be completed and when is it expected to begin?
Um, probably won't get started until March. It takes about three months to complete one, so it's June, July.
We look forward to it, Eddie.
Me too, thank you.
Okay, that was Item Ten A and Ten B. We're going to go back now to Item Nine A, and this is a public hearing, to consider for adoption in ordinance two thousand fifteen dash forty-six for a proposed text amendment regarding accessory apartments, creating City Code Section ten dash fifteen dash forty-seven and amending Sections ten dash six dash two, definitions, ten dash nine A dash two, permitted conditional and accessory uses, ten dash nine B dash two, permitted conditional and accessory uses, ten dash nine C dash two, permitted conditional accessory uses, and ten dash fourteen dash twenty-four dash two, C, permitted and conditional accessory uses, permitting accessory apartments in the Pleasant Grove City Code. Okay?
Okay, uh, I'll just start off with a little, um, preface here. On, on our, uh, presentation here tonight, I did have the city planner Royce Davies, uh, update this a little bit. I've been out of town until just before the meeting. I have not had a chance to go through the presentation, so it will be a surprise to both of us. Not really a surprise, I know basically what's in there. So, if I stumble a little, please forgive me. Uh, so, going back to, uh, I, I won't give a lot of history here, but the city has been working on this issue for about fifteen years now, on and off. There have been a few different proposals that have come in the form of an ordinance format, uh, before the city. And, uh, for one reason or another, it was not true. Uh, it, it tends to be an issue that does not go away. There, uh, there is a lot of concern that has been expressed to staff and to, um, council, planning commission, in public meetings, that, uh, there is a need for a, a way to have permitted accessory apartments. We've also had concerns expressed to the city that, uh, people who live in single-family neighborhoods, who bought into single-family neighborhoods, do not like, appreciate the idea of having, uh, accessory apartments in their neighborhood and, and do not support this. This has kind of been the battle that's gone on for a long time. Uh, we have seen, um, over the years, in a few different surveys, that there is a majority of opinion that supports the permitting of accessory apartments. Um, but exactly how to do that is where it further, uh, gets into complications. There are those who wish to see, uh, permitted, uh, accessory apartments without any kind of regulation. Do whatever you want, however many units you want. Don't worry about parking or what type of access is or anything like that. Just let us do what we want, one hundred percent property rights. Then there's those who feel like, well, let's just have minimal regulation that, uh, is for safety. Then there's others that really would like to have a lot of regulation. So, it's just, it's, it's all over the board. But, uh, it, it does seem to be that at least in the camp of please permit them, uh, is a majority opinion. So, with that, um, I will go through, uh, what we have and what has been presented to the planning commission. And I'll just mention upfront, the planning commission recommended approval, not unanimously. There was one party commissioner who did not, uh, give their support. So, uh, let's see. So, here we, we have just a visual on accessory apartments, uh, not being permitted and have not been since, um, nineteen eighty-five as part of the city code. So, by so saying, it has in the past been permitted. And there are places, and, and there are accessory apartments that were built under a permit, uh, of the city, uh, that are currently still in use. Um, but in nineteen eighty-five, the, the city adopted a new code that, uh, no longer allowed for that. And so, uh, through the years, the only provisions that have been made is that in certain areas where multifamily is permitted, uh, and then in the downtown village zone, uh, there have been accommodations to allow for these types of uses in certain zones. But in this, uh, single-family residential zones, it still remains not permitted and has remained so since nineteen eighty-five. Since two thousand, the year two thousand, is when discussions came up again as to maybe we should look, relook at this and, and find a way to permit them. Okay, I'm going to skip through some of this. Got some good visuals here, but we'll just get to the meat here. Okay, I, I think this is a good point. Um, and in your staff report, I'm not going to review all the detail, but there, there are, um, a lot of opportunities for housing throughout Utah County. But there is, um, as you look at the, the income, the, the demographics for income in our community and in throughout, uh, Utah County, there, there does show a need for affordable housing. And even in, in Pleasant Grove, where we have a large percentage of multifamily housing, we still do not necessarily have that same percentage in affordable housing. Because a lot of the new condos and apartments that are currently being rented or sold do not meet the qualification of affordable housing. This is a way to, to allow for our children who grow up in Pleasant Grove and cannot yet, on their first home or their second home, afford to buy a home, afford to buy a condo. It allows them an opportunity to live in our basements. And, uh, I think a lot of times we tend to think that accessory apartments are, are lived in by those people, but those people, by and large, are our people, our families, that need to have affordable living situations. Okay, I'm, I'm not going to get into all of that unless there are questions. We can talk about, uh, the, the income and, and the cost of housing. So, we'll just get to the, I'm sure our, our city planner would love to have explained all of these points here. So, there are permitted zones that, or allow, zones that do permit it currently. So, aspects of the ordinance that is proposed include that an entrance must not allow for duplex appearance. So, we don't, we can't have, it look like a duplex, there's two doors, it looks like a divided house. We're not, we're not permitting a duplex appearance. Addressing should be A and B for the units, for the primary and the apartment units. The, uh, there should be six off-street parking spaces required. And let me explain that, there's, uh, I have been party to some discussions that seem to have not understood exactly what that means. Currently, all single-family homes in Pleasant Grove are required to have four off-street parking. That would, uh, that would include your garage. That would count up to two, two parking stalls if you had a two-car garage. Then you have a driveway in front of that, there's two more. So, that's the four, that's how single-family homes meet the four. Uh, so what we're requiring is just two more. If you're going to have, uh, a accessory apartment, you're going to invite a new family to join yours under the same roof or on the same lot, who will most likely have their own vehicles, usually more than one. It makes sense to require additional parking for them as well. Now, there are those situations where, uh, in a single-family home, it's a, uh, a single person, perhaps a widow or something that needs to rent out their apartment. And so, perhaps the parking need is not as great for that particular person at that particular time. However, we need to provide for requirements that cover all potential. However, we need to provide for requirements that cover all potential situations in that house, on that property. So when that single person leaves, sells, and someone else buys it, a family with four kids, they have three cars, four cars, then we have an accessory apartment where we rent to another family that have two cars, we're going to need that, those two extra parking spaces. Yes, there are situations where that parking is not needed. But in city planning, in city regulations, we try to provide for all situations. What is the potentiality? The potentiality could actually exceed six. But I think this is kind of more a typical average type of a situation that we would be looking at. Living area must be separate from the principal unit. So in other words, they have their own entrance, they have their own sleeping, their own sanitation, kitchen facilities, and such. Building code must be met. So if an apartment wants to become registered to be permitted with the city, if there are certain building code issues that need to be taken care of, they will need to take care of those. If it's a new apartment that's being built, then they, of course, need to meet.
If there are people in the hall that would like to share, we have maybe eight, eight or nine chairs in here.
You're being invited to come in and sit.
Couple here, raise your hand if you have an empty seat next to you, please. One right there, is there anyone else in the hall there?
Sure, there's one right here, there's some up here. All right, so an interior access must be maintained between the two units. For emergency service purposes, there needs to be, have, needs to have that additional access. So it can be a locked door, but there needs to be a door between the two, the principal unit and the accessory unit. Apartments cannot be sold. Apartments must be registered. The ordinance is proposing a $25 one-time registration fee to cover the inspections. A two-year period will start, if the ordinance is approved, that allows for registration. So in other words, anybody who has currently an accessory apartment will need to register with the city within two years from the time we adopt this ordinance. If they do not, the last bullet point there is failure to register after this period will result in a potential fine of $1,000. So we're going to do our utmost best to advertise this requirement, and we're going to give a full two-year period for everyone to find out and to become registered. If at that time they choose not to be registered, well, we'll have to deal with that at that point. But we do need to have this registration. If the city is going to be in the situation or the business of regulating these accessory apartments, then we need, we have taken upon us a bit of liability. If we don't enforce that, and we don't see that things are being done correctly and properly, then that can come back to bite us. So I think it behooves us to actually follow up on those who, for one reason or another, have not registered. So again, it's not requiring that fine to be in place, it's just allowing the city to do that if it's necessary. Home occupation businesses with no customer traffic are permitted in an accessory apartment with property owner permission.
If they have an extrovert, the home business?
Home business, well, of course, they will have to get a business license through the city. Yeah. Okay, let's see, so I think we already did that one. All right. So those are the key points of the ordinance that is being proposed. As mentioned, we've gone through a very lengthy process in reviewing this, and staff feels very comfortable that this is a good ordinance. Is it perfect? No. Is this going to perfectly cover all situations? No. I don't know that there's any code that can do that. But I think we've made a very good attempt to create a code that will cover a situation that is ongoing. We do have, we are aware that there are many accessory apartments in the community currently. And to go on continually not permitting them, and making them outlaw situations, I do not believe is responsible of the city. We need to do something. They're not going to go away if we say, you're not permitted. They will continue. We need to be in the business of regulating them.
My understanding is that the city council is looking at this from the perspective of health, safety, and welfare.
Yes.
We can do that, or we can open it up to the public, what would you prefer?
I don't know if this is for Tom, but I would like to hear from the mayor this year. I actually have a daughter and his son-in-law that live in an accessory apartment in the house. So I don't know if. It's a daughter and his son-in-law's family, it's mother-in-law.
That would be considered a mother-in-law apartment. And let me clarify that for everybody here. We do currently permit family situations. We do require, if you're going to have a second kitchen in your home, in other words, you could have a full, separate apartment. But if it contains a kitchen, and it's the second kitchen in the home, we require that the property owner sign an affidavit saying that this is not to be used to be rented out to other people than family. So it's considered a mother-in-law apartment. All we're saying currently in our code is that you can't rent that apartment out to someone you're not related to.
Does anyone else want to disclose anything?
You know me, I like to disclose.
My house is too small for it, so. Okay. Anybody else want to comment or ask questions? All right. Let's open it up to the public. You're all welcome to express your comments on this. If it looks like a lot of people want to express it, try to limit your amount of speech to, you know, something reasonable. And then, and if you have, if you have a repetitious comment that someone's already made, maybe just make reference to it, so that we kind of tell you that. You will need to state your name and address for the record.
Too slow. Michael Bud, 936 North, 1240 West. Regarding this issue, there are some things I would like to point out, and I'm going to use the FAQ that is provided on the city website regarding this issue in my comments, as well as the notes, the city council meeting from March 24th of this year. Wanted to point out, as has been mentioned, the previous surveys that have been submitted since 2009. And it was stated in that city council meeting in March that staff was of the opinion that the public had ample opportunity to express their questions and concerns. I would agree with that also. I don't know why things were not acted upon at that time. It's lamentable that there wasn't more people who involved themselves in that survey. It's lamentable, there's only 33% that vote for city elections. But we don't halt city elections, you know, based on that. But in the FAQ, it states, for example, regarding this, that, sorry. Three surveys to date have been performed to garner public opinion, input on the AA issue, none of which would be considered statistically accurate. So I kind of pose, you know, why. I disagree with that statement. It says the majority seems to support the permitting of AA, which, then it says ultimately, it may be an issue that requires an informed decision to be made based on the facts and needs as they relate to the health, safety, and welfare welfare goals of the community, rather than based on the opinions of people with limited awareness of the pertinent facts and issues. This was FAQ number 10, by the way. And the mayor stated that this is what we're basing on. So I have a question that I open to the staff and council together. Does the city have a statistical report where data has been compiled, at least since 2009, that demonstrates that the health, safety, or welfare of citizens has been compromised in direct relation to the existence of an accessory apartment?
Do we have any such records? Are you aware, Scott? I don't think we have any evidence, study, or anything. Maybe referring to, you know, ambulance calls or things like that, do we have issues with that? We haven't reviewed our calls to say this was basically because of an accessory apartment or anything like that. I don't think it's been tabulated in finite numbers. The council did rely on input from our public safety personnel with respect to what occurs when they go to a home that has an accessory apartment, and they have to access it through the home, and try to figure out where to go. And so we've relied on their input as to what they experienced. Tabulation?
Tabulation, no. Okay, so I submit that with, in the absence of such a report, it's difficult as a citizen to be informed, as is suggested here. And our awareness is then limited. And for me, I then fall back on my ideology. I'm a conservative constitutionalist, which in part means that I believe what Amendment 9 says, that those rights enumerated in the Constitution are not meant to construe that other retained rights of people are to be denied or disparaged. So I also want to point out that in this FAQ number nine, there are only two options that are stated. Number one, specifically define, regulate, and permit accessory apartments, or two, expressly prohibit them in certain zones. And I submit, and again, following what was stated in the council meeting in March by Director Young, three potential responses, a no, a yes without regulation, and a yes with some regulation. And so I submit for myself that I would like there to be the specifically define and permit accessory apartments without regulation on the FAQ. I think the FAQ should have been updated based on those comments made in that council meeting. But I'm just stating that there should be that option of, we should define it without regulation. And again, I just fall on my ideology about regulation, government regulation and bureaucracy, in the absence of having any specific data that shows that there is a true issue. Otherwise, we're going on perception. And, you know, I used to say, if your analysis is merely a mixture of theory, conjecture, and expectations, your result will be a fabulous recipe for pie in the sky. Thank you for your time.
I don't mean to be rude, I just, let's not do the applause, okay?
Vaughn Mayo, 50 North, 1300 East. As a real estate investor, I've addressed the city council on this issue before. And when I talked, or listened to the planning commission meeting last week, it came down to that this, that you're trying to do with the auxiliary apartments. I'm in favor of the auxiliary apartments being allowed. But I have a problem with all of the regulation stuff. First, it's a voluntary thing. Unless you're going to add a lot of staff to check and send out notices to all the people buying property in the city every week, and sending out inspectors every week, you're not going to be able to enforce this. And so they said it's basically complaint-oriented, okay? I only heard some of the comments that were being stated earlier, before I came into the room. The last thing we need in this community is a bunch of complaints that would divide the city, okay? As a real estate investor and a property owner, I have on occasion received anonymous letters regarding one of my properties. I recently got one. In fact, I've gotten two on the same house, from the same person. It's an anonymous letter with all kinds of facts that they're throwing out that are erroneous, okay? As a landlord, it's my responsibility to check these things out. How does my tenant feel when I approach them and say, hey, you know, a neighbor's saying that you've got, you know, a couple other families live in here, and you've got people living in the trailer in the driveway? And they're going like, no, we don't have anybody. You can go look in the trailer, we're working on refurbishing the trailer, there's nobody living in it. How do they feel about their neighbors? This is an, you know, unknown thing. I wanted to bring the letter with me, but then I thought, no, that would take too much time. But I wanted to share one other experience with you, because to me, this is an unenforceable set of regulations. We already have building codes, we already have parking codes, we already have so many things in place. Why do we need anymore? Wouldn't it be easier just to take the wording out that says that auxiliary apartments are not allowed? Get rid of that, and leave the other regulations alone. But several years ago, a lot of you in this room are LDS, okay, I am too. A lot of years ago, as a member of a bishopric, I was asked by the bishop to put a single lady and her kids in one of my houses, because she could not afford a decent house in a decent neighborhood. I was asked to put her in at a lower reduced rent than what the house would normally receive. Five years later, she was still paying the same rent. My taxes had gone up, my insurance had gone up, my negative cash flow on the property had gone up, and my income had gone down. I had to raise the rent, $50, which was still substantially below. I received an anonymous letter from somebody in my ward telling me that I was the scum of the earth and everything it bad, okay? Sid, maybe you can relate to it from the comments that I kind of heard you saying. How do you think I felt walking into church each Sunday? Think, no, and somebody thought so little of me for doing something nice, because they didn't know. This is what this is going to do to our city. Because people, you know, somebody's going to complain about somebody, and they're going to get upset, and they go, well, what about so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so? And it's going to perpetuate more problems. I would ask you, I mean, I can go on about other things on it, but this is not enforceable. You penalize people for exercising their own property rights. I mean, who lives in my house is not your business, and who lives in yours is not my business, okay? I mean, as a landlord, I have to be careful who I put in my single-family houses, okay? And I would encourage people to be careful about who they rent to. But something like this is unenforceable to start with. And I think that was basically said, there's so much to it that cannot be totally taken and controlled, and it's going to cause nothing but contention and problems. So I encourage you to just leave our regulations we have and strike that that's illegal to have that apartment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm Greg Reary, I'm 141 West, 2600 North in Pleasant Grove. But I was here at the previous city council meeting when this was brought up. And I was really quite surprised at the lack of compassion that I saw. And I want to echo what was just said, is that most of these people that live in apartments, it's really out of their control. I remember during the last real economic problem that we had here, my wife was a relief society president. There were people that were losing their homes. And they could only see their way around it by inviting someone to share in the cost, by renting out their basements. And we had some people in the ward that complained, you know, about that. That's not fair, and stuff like that. And so I agree that I think we just should open the door and have compassion. And at the last meeting that I was here, it was, I was very discouraged, because I heard, I don't know what her name was, but a lady from the city, and they said, well, what if people don't comply? Well, we make a big fine. And $1,000 was brought up, and then they even mentioned, I think, $2,500 for the second. And then they even mentioned, I think, $2,500 for the second offense and things like that. And I didn't move to Pleasant Grove to have that. Anyway, I agree with what was just recommended, that we just have compassion and understanding for people that are really trying to hang on to their homes. And it isn't over now, even though we have a lot of nice homes here in Pleasant Grove. There are a lot of people really struggling and I think we should give them a benefit of the doubt to have compassion. And if there are problems of noncompliance with the, whatever improvements have to be made for this for safety, that can be addressed in some way. I don't know how. But it was also brought up at that meeting, which was almost funny. They said that this has been in effect in Orem for two years. I don't remember. I didn't write it down, but that it has been, that is mandatory to register. And then they ask, how many have registered? And I think they said about 200 or less. Out of the whole city of Orem, you know, there are a few more rented apartments than that. And I think we'll have the same thing here. And the only way we can do it is a Gestapo type of thing of going around, sneaking around, or having the members of the city council going around in their cars, seeing who is at variance, and pretty soon we're just trying to sniff out problems to make money. That's the way I got it from my last meeting is the city was trying to make money on the penalties that would surely arise. And I don't, I hope that isn't what we're about. Thank you.
Stephen Moon, 895 South, 1550 East. I am very much in support of a change and for the most part, the way it's been put together, there are a few wording changes that I think need to be made. And they come as a result of sitting on the committee last spring that went through this and put a proposal together. And as we discussed this, we've discussed the ins and outs and everything and tried to take everything into account, all the reasons for, all the reasons against. We, I was surprised that we were able to really look at it from all perspectives. And one of the things that I wasn't very much in favor of is, you know, that doing something about addresses and the AB system certainly takes care of the issue so that the police and the fire department and ambulance have the opportunity to get to the right place. I know that is an issue and hopefully is a driving factor in making a change and recognizing that accessory apartments exist because there is a lot of them. And most of us have a neighbor with an accessory apartment. We may not know it. I have neighbors that had them and I didn't realize it. It's not like having a duplex. By having an owner occupied building, it is kind of self-polices the type of people that are renting, you know, if they're making noise, if they're destroying the property, if they are trashing the lot, you're going to get rid of them because you live there and you want to take pride in your property. And you're going to be picky about the type of people that you allow to live there. So these are different than, you know, allowing duplexes and things. And it's very much a mandatory source of income for some people, divorced people, widows, widowers, people that lose a job and things that have been mentioned. And saying that I'm very much in support of it, I do think there's a few changes that need to be made in the proposal. I think on line C, and I don't know if you have them to look at or not, but it kind of gets an open and number of people that can live in that accessory apartment. And I wonder if we don't want to somehow limit that. Excuse me, it's not C. D, number two on D. You know, two or more adults or persons related and then adding children. If you read that whole thing, it just, it opens it up. So it's kind of an unlimited number of people could be there. Maybe some wording changes could help. Also on P, dealing with the registration as it goes through there.
Which letter?
On P. Less a lot of, you know, if you're going to build a home, if you're going to remodel, if you're going to do something to create the apartment, that we have a lot of existing apartments that aren't addressed there and how they're going to be handled. So I think there's a wording change that is needed there to bring those into compliance. And under P, one and two probably were intended for existing apartments to be included in it, but on three and four, I certainly hope people with existing apartments don't have to take out a building permit and go through that process and the inspections and whatnot. I can make a great argument for why all these existing apartments need to be inspected. On the other hand, I think that's kind of the downfall and pitfall in making the ordinance change is that if you start requiring inspections, no one's going to step forward and do this. But I also understand why the city feels a need for it. And that, you know, that, I think most people are fearful that if they register, at some point, they're going to be taxed specifically because of that apartment. And there is that fear factor there for a lot of people. Personally, I'm kind of in favor of registration, but I think as you read through here, it's a little bit ambiguous as to what happens to those existing apartments and how they're handled. And I think that's the points that I had, but I am very much in support of making the change. And I think that for the most part, this is very good. Stab that up.
Thank you for your service on the committee.
I just, Stan Williams, 175 South, 1300 East. There was one thing on this page that bothered me a lot. When we were talking about it last Thursday, the failure to register after this period will result in a $1,000 fine. That was defined as could be. And I don't like that solid will be. I think that should be could be.
That was also stated tonight, the way you presented.
Yeah, and that's incorrect upon the screen there. The actual ordinance says that it could be, let's see, I'll read it. Says, this ordinance, okay, I better back up. Failure to complete the registration of an existing accessory apartment within two years of the passing of this ordinance may result in a fine of $1,000, which may result in a lien on the property.
So let's make sure the correct language is the one that's posted so we don't end up like we did on the other one.
Just so you know, Mayor, I did a little research. I'm not.
Oh, really? Okay. Thank you.
What did she say?
I'm just a little concerned with the extent of that actually with being kind of open-ended on it. It just kind of feels like we're getting back to, as some of them mentioned, is the Gestapo type feeling, okay? So there was another thing that, on the parking, why does that have to be so complicated? If we just require enough off-street parking for each vehicle that's in that residence or residences, there shouldn't be an issue. When snow removal time comes, if they're not off the street, then it becomes an issue and it's just like it is right now. My other concern is I'm in favor of me being able to have one. I've lived in an R1 for nine years and have not had one. But I would guess in our ward, and I don't think I'm guessing, I would believe that there are eight or more in our ward. Okay? So, yeah, we've got a lot of them out there. But the one concern that I have is that, look around, we've got a lot of elderly people and getting older in this, in this city. And a lot of us want to stay here. And if I can't have one, I may not be able to stay here. I just don't feel like that the emphasis on the incomes and stuff, we were talking about these younger couples and younger families. A lot of us older ones are going to have to do something with our large homes. I don't see why we should be restricted. So, you know, as far as that goes, I just don't want to feel like I'm limited to my being able to provide for my retirement or staying here. So anyway, thank you.
Lisa Liddier, 1095 East Canyon View Lane. The mayor will be glad that I wrote this, so I'm not going off the cuff. I'd like to see them, yeah, you're welcome, like to see them legal with very little if no regulation outside what's in the code. According to this proposed new regulation, the citizens will be forced to register and they'll be forced to pay a $25 or more fee to do it. And then they will have two years to register or they'll be forced to pay a fine and they'll be, their property could be leaned. I don't believe in having any of those in there. A home inspection is going to come with the registration, we believe. We're not sure what will be inspected, how, what are they going to base it off of the new building codes or the old, it's not really put in very well in the wording. Registration and regulation for accessory apartments is based on this law by money-changing hands. Currently, the citizens are allowed to have their family rent out part of the home as apartment as long as no money is changing hands, like a mother-in-law apartment. Collecting rent should not be based, a basis for creating law and regulations. Citizens should have the right to own and use their property. They can choose what to do what they want with their property as long as they are not infringing upon their neighbor's right to do the same. The city has combined the codes with existing illegal accessory apartments with new ones that are following a building code permit. So they're putting it together. And I think that that, the regulations will be the same, but I don't think that that's going to work because it can be very expensive for people that have an existing one if they have to conform to new building codes, like with the staircase or we're talking about windows and, because the building codes that we have today in 2015 are way different than what a lot of people have. So I think it's going to put a really big burden on people that have them already. Popular today, we have what's called complaint-based law. The cities want the law on the book just in case they need or want to enforce it. Complaint-based law enforcement, I believe, is not equal treatment to all, it's discrimination because citizens will break, they have broken law and only those that get a complaint will suffer the consequences. Those who do not get a complaint will be able to be allowed to break the law without any negative consequences. Most citizens do not realize that if the city follows this type of law, citizens can sue their city if they can prove that their life, liberty, or property was hurt or destroyed because of law on the book was not enforced. We have current city law already on the books that requires four off-street parking spaces for a single-family home. The new regulation proposed for an accessory apartment requires for two additional parking spaces, a total of six. I believe that this conflicts with our current city law in Chapter Five, Section 6.53, 6.52, and 6.523. All citizens are not allowed to park on the street currently overnight during a storm and they're only allowed to park up to 48 hours for the rest of the year. Our city does not enforce this unless a complaint is made and we either need to enforce it, remove it altogether, or change it. We don't need a separate law, which is being proposed with accessory apartments forcing two more off-street parking. Since we all pay for the roads, I believe we should all be allowed to park on them during the year if you want, even if it's a pain to the neighbors. My poor neighbors probably feel this way. If we have to have an off-street parking lot or parking law, let's just have one that we enforce. It would make more sense if we said that all citizens must have one off-street parking space for every vehicle that lives at their house. That would be easier than telling citizens to have a certain amount of parking spaces when each family has a different amount of vehicles and a different amount of drivers in the home. The city is allowed to regulate for life safety issues. And that was talked about a lot in a lot of these meetings that we had. Whose life safety are we talking about? The property owner, the renter, or the city employees that, police and fire that have to come in, or all? Is there proof that, or is it just a belief that we're basing it on that someone's going to get hurt? If we really have a life safety issue to the city workers, police and fire, or the property owners, then wouldn't we be applying this to mother-in-law apartments as well? And those who rent out their entire home would be regulated the same as we want to regulate accessory apartments if that's true? So why are we regulating life accessory or life safety on this if we're not going to do it for what we currently have? Why do we feel that government needs to regulate if you have a, you need to have a separate kitchen? What if a property owner wants to rent with a shared kitchen and they want to share the kitchen to who they're renting to? What is the problem with that if both parties know and agree that that's what they want to do? Why does the government care? Separate addresses posted on the front of the home was another one. In one area, it said that we will not allow two separate front entrances into the home positioned on the front of the house because it makes it look like a duplex in a single-family residential and it ruins the character. Doesn't a separate address posted on the front of the home for all to see do the same thing? If two doors look like an apartment, doesn't two separate addresses tell everyone that this home is a house with an apartment? Owner occupied. Many of us believe, but it's not proven, that if you own or live in your own home, you take better care of it than if you rent it. But since we allow for single-family homeowners to move and rent out their entire home as one unit to another person, what is the difference to the character of the zone and the possible effect to the neighbors? If we rent out the entire home as one unit to one large family versus renting out the top and the bottom to two separate small families? It also talks about how many can occupy the home or the accessory apartment. Why are we spelling out how many people can live in a rental part of the home when we are not allowed by state law as a renter person because of discrimination per HUD and Department of Labor to tell families how many people are in a family and how many can live in the home? The city code has been put in place that spells this and I pulled out the code for the Department of Labor because as, if I'm renting it out, I have to follow the Department of Labor HUD laws or else I get in trouble as a, as a person who is renting something to someone else. So they conflict. I'm actually not a fan of the temporary guests can only stay 30 days. This law should be removed. If someone wants to have a family or friends staying as a guest, the government should not be able to tell you how many days it should be. It's a private property right. One thing that I was worried about when I was in planning commission on Thursday is Ken Young, who I like, sorry, I'm going to quote you on this. I'm so sorry, Ken. He's very nice to me, so I'm just going to read what he said. It made me a little nervous. He said, after two years, no registration or if no, they don't register and a complaint has been filed, wouldn't it be, it wouldn't be any different than what it is now? Clarification to those people here at this meeting who feel that adding on these regulations to the city makes it more difficult for them to add an accessory apartment. It's not the case because currently the city code does not permit them to be legal period in this single-family zone. We have enforced issues where someone has had an illegal accessory apartment and it's been shut down. Now, that hasn't happened in a long time, especially not recently, because we're in the process of reviewing and we're more tolerant where law enforcement is concerned on these. But it's my opinion, should we not approve this ordinance? We may get into a discussion of how we should enforce the current situation of illegal apartments more clearly than what we have been. Because we've been in limbo, we might, we might have to discuss further of how we might crack down on apartments that are illegal, which is basically almost all in the city unless they have been approved by the city under the previous code or a zone before. We could get a lot more strict and cause a lot more problems in the community by shutting down tons of accessory apartments. We can't just willy-nilly it and it doesn't matter how we rate, how we legalize these, so it, saying that it doesn't matter how we legalize these or if they're safe or if you put six apartments in your basement or you don't care if there are cars all over the place or you have a separate entrance. You might call it infringing property rights, but it's important, I believe, to balance. So that freaked me out a little bit going, if we don't pass, it's almost like if you don't pass this, we're going to start going and enforcing, kind of like MAG did to you guys a month ago, saying if you don't support HB 362, then you, and you don't support it as a city, then if you want to go up to get the legislation to do something else, they're going to come back to you and say, we're not going to do anything because you didn't you didn't take what we gave you, you flushed it, so why would we listen to you now? It freaked me out a little bit. And then Drew Armstrong said that there are cities that if the citizens, after they've had time to come into compliance and don't, they've come in to remove the kitchen. That scared a lot of people in the room, especially myself. I don't have, my basement's unfinished, so I'm not, I don't have an illegal accessory apartment in my house either. But there were a few things like that that were written, but I hope that helps clarify this. I've been to all the meetings and I've never said anything, so I'm sorry it took up a longer time, but I've saved it all. Oh, yeah. Current parking law, this is in the code, we, I found it on, the flag lot one is where it's actually written, because I, I tried to find where they had the four, you're required to have a four, four, it's actually two in, in the code in every zone, except flag lots is where it's actually written as four. So I'm like, I could not find it in my giant book of codes. Do I just read it again? Would that help? Already on the books, current law, you need four off-street parking places for a single-family home. This new regulation that we're talking about here would require an additional two off-street parking if you have an accessory apartment, so you need six total. This conflicts with the current city law, and I can tell those two in a minute, where it's, it's about parking, public parking. All citizens are not allowed to park on the street overnight during a snowstorm, and they're allowed only to park up to forty-eight hours on the street for the rest of the year. The city doesn't enforce it, it's on complaint base, and so if someone complains, they will come and enforce it, I believe, but it's not enforced. I believe that we don't need two separate laws because what's being proposed with accessory apartments just forces two more parking, off-street parking places. When you're not, since we pay for the roads, we should be allowed to park on them during the year if we want. If we must have an off-street parking law, just have one that we enforce it. I would concede that if we have, if we do have to make a law, that it would make more sense that all citizens must have one off-street parking space for every vehicle that lives at their house. I don't know how you would word that legally, that's just my slang. If there is proof, or excuse me, it's much easier than telling citizens to have a certain amount of parking spaces when each family has a different amount of cars, different amount of drivers in the house, whether they're renting or not. So having a certain amount, number, you actually break the law. Because if the city says you have to have this many and you have this many cars, you've now broken the law. Where are you going to park? On the street, which is illegal, according to, so laws are all over the place contradicting each other. Okay. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Bishop, and my address is thirteen ninety-five North, three ninety East. And I have to say, I in the past have been completely against accessory housing, and I know that's not the popular opinion here tonight, but after listening to the city council and planning commission meeting, I watched that online that was held on September twenty-second. I understand why the city is looking at making these legal, and I have a better understanding of it, but I just want to say that I do feel that there should be some regulations behind it. And yes, I believe we all have personal property rights, but I also feel that our personal property rights are always governed by some type of regulation and laws. And currently, our neighborhoods are single-family residents, and so if we are going to change that, I, I feel that we should have certain things in place, and I definitely believe they should be owner-occupied. I am not necessarily having the number of parking spots. Like was mentioned here, I see the problem that you run into with that, but I do believe that there should be adequate parking and, and some of those things that should be addressed and required before an accessory apartment is even allowed. I don't think it's fair for neighbors to have to have someone's car in their front yard every day. And in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to worry about it, but sometimes people just are rude and they park wherever, you know, and I've got a friend who's got a, a home in our neighborhood that has every room rented out to someone else, and they've constantly got different cars in their front yard every night, and it, it does get old. And so I realize with the family, you do have the ebb and flow of kids sometimes having, you know, more teenage drivers than at other times, but it doesn't last forever. So I would say to protect the property rights of homeowners that are already living and bought in homes that were single-family residents, that I would say that you do have to have some kind of regulation and requirements that will be enforced. And I realize that's a hard thing because in that meeting, I learned we've got one enforcement officer that has many other responsibilities, and it is hard. So good luck, I guess. I'm saying I, I think it should be enforced, I don't know how you're going to do it, so. But it was also brought up that, and I, I definitely got more of the opinion in that meeting that this was for health, safety, and welfare than I'm getting necessarily tonight. I'm feeling tonight it's more about people having the right to earn money, but if you're setting this in place for the health, safety, and welfare, I think that you do have to have certain requirements. The fire department said in that meeting that when there's a fire in a home with accessory housing, there does tend to be more loss of life. And so if you're, if you're looking at that as your basis, I think you have to then really ask what's fair to require our fire department personnel to go in. They need to, they need to go into homes that are going to be safe to, you know, be fight, not safe to fight fires, but I mean, it needs to be set up for them that there's not like six different apartments within a house. I just think that their safety of people renting in the home and those that are going into fight fires or respond to things need to be considered. And so it was said in that meeting that if regulations can't be met, then they shouldn't have the accessory housing. And I have to say, I do agree with that because if the purpose is health, safety, and welfare, then that does need to be a priority. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Drew Armstrong, and my address is nine ninety-five East Center Street. And I'll stand up and kind of speak at you as the chair of the, serving as the chair of the planning commission this year. While we've been working on this over the course of the past, what, year, at your direction, we have had, there are seven of us and two alternates, and I think there've been three, four other commissioners that have come and gone or, or left, and we've, we've put new people in place. And I, I do want to tell you that this isn't what, what we've come up with to present to you. As far as this goes, isn't my, if I had written it, it would have been different. I'm sure that if Jennifer wrote it, it would be different. And if, there are several of, of the different commissioners that have very, very different ideas, just like our citizenry have different ideas as far as what's important and what's not important. And we've spent a lot of evenings working on this and working through the idea of, of it, the, the parking issue here is not, our proposal here doesn't represent what I would have made as a suggestion where Drew came. That being said, we have, you know, a couple of the commissioners, some of our lady commissioners that are not realtors, and we've got one that's on one end of the spectrum and one that's on the other end of the spectrum as far as, as parking goes. And we've come up with the best, after a lot of talking and a lot of input, we've come up with the best, I think, that we could come up with, and we, we've really discussed these pretty carefully. I am sure that there are going to need to be changes over time because things will come up that are unexpected and, and aren't working as well as we'd like them to, to be working, just like any other part of our, our code. We're always working with it and trying to come up with the best solution to, and I think this is really key. What we're trying to do is we're trying to balance property rights. We're trying to balance the right of quiet enjoyment of the neighbor that should be his expectation to some degree with the right for somebody to use their property how they deem fit. They paid for it, they own it. That being said, it could be the neighbor on either side that's bugging the other guy. And, and I think we need some sort of, you know, the regulation isn't designed to make it a difficult experience and to really infringe upon the rights of, of the individual. It's designed to make it so that it works for our entire community. We don't live on three-acre lots, right? Lisa said that, I, I did want to correct one thing. Lisa said that I had mentioned that, that in some of the other municipalities, they actually will go in and pull kitchens out. They will. I don't think that's a good idea. I, I am not in favor of that in any way, shape, or form. I think, you know, you, you figure out some appropriate, what, result for, for non-compliance because it is a health, safety, and welfare issue, and, and we're trying to protect not only our firemen that are trying to get in windows or, or go downstairs or haul people out of basements or find people who are having heart attacks, but we're also trying to protect the tenants that are living in these places so that they, there is a, an expectation that they can, can live in, in a place that's safe, just as we have an expectation that we live in a place that is somewhat safe because we have a building inspector that's looked at a home when it was built and we meet certain building codes. I, I would suggest, I mean, we have looked a lot at different, at different cities' codes. And I think the number in, just to correct something, I think the number of registered accessory apartments before they reopened it back up in Orem is fourteen hundred. I think since they've reopened it back up, it's well over two thousand, not two hundred. So people do see the value in, in going ahead and, and registering, and, and it makes a difference to them.
Did Orem do anything different with the reopening of that? What would make it so that they would get so many more?
You know, I, well, it wasn't, it wasn't a ton more. They had fourteen hundred, and then they closed the registration in two thousand and four. And, I mean, I, I think that, I mean, an experience, I had a lady who hired me to sell her home, and she had built her accessory apartment when they were starting to get elderly, and her husband had passed away. She went away on two missions in a row while the city came up with the, the idea that they weren't going to certify any more new accessory apartments, and they shut that down for her while she built that thing, added it to her house as per code, and they wouldn't let her use it as an accessory apartment. And as the, as the economy was tanking back in two thousand eight, it made her house unsellable completely. So.
So Orem didn't do anything to make all of these people watch register theirs?
Well, they opened it back up, and I think that people who had not registered suddenly realized that, oh, my gosh, you know, what if the city shuts this down again? And I think that probably scares a lot of them into doing it. I, I don't like that kind of a situation. I hope they never shut it down again as far as that goes because I do like the ability, I mean, you know, I'm a, contrary to some people's belief, I, I do have a pretty strong, I mean, as a Realtor, that's what we fight for is personal property rights. I think we have to balance those because I think it is a personal property right to be able to, to enjoy your property quietly and, and, and not be disturbed or inconvenienced by having something next door that is, is really putting you out. Right now, I mean, one of the things that, that I, I want to mention is right now, the solution, the only tool that the city has is to shut down the neighbor. And so you could be bothered extensively by your neighbor right now, and if you know that, that that little grandma lady that has those rowdy kids down in the basement that keep parking on your property or wherever, if you know that you complain, if you complain about that, that the only solution is for the city to come in and take that away, then are you going to say anything? Because you do love your neighbor and you do care about their, their well-being. And, you know, maybe she doesn't have the ability to solve the problem that's in, on her own property. I, I know that, I mean, this is not everything that I'd wanted to be. While I don't think you should use Provost's example as far as removing apartments from homes that aren't approved, I do think it might be, you know, one, one of the biggest ones here, that when we gone and talked to other cities about nuisances and problems that, that arise from accessory apartments is parking. I think that's ob, obvious that that would be an issue that people are dealing with. This was not, I, I mean, what we've come up with wasn't what I was for. This was an amalgamation of a lot of different, different commissioners' opinion for the parking requirement. We put it before you, and then, you know, obviously you're going to listen to the citizenry, but, but we've spent a lot of hours kind of putting together what, what we are presenting to you with, with the staffs, a lot of staff help. If you want to look at a different solution regarding, kind of more on the end of what Lisa was talking about as far as fitting a specific parking need to a requirement for an accessory apartment, do look at Provost's code as far as that goes. So.
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
Matt Godsey, ten twenty-six East, eleven hundred North. I want that to start off with a suggestion, and this is from Provost City's code, and it is fourteen point three oh, point oh-three oh, regarding accessory apartments and specifically regarding parking. And so I think this is what Drew alluded to. And it specifically says, "In no case shall the number of off-street parking spaces be less than the number of vehicles being maintained on the premises." And that's the verbiage I think that Lisa was kind of referring to as well. I think that would resolve a lot of the issues. You don't have to define a certain amount of spaces or anything else, it's just fact of the matter. This property can maintain this many cars, therefore you have to abide by that. Some questions I have.
So can you think about that?
Yes.
So if you have ten drivers in your home, you can have all things on the street?
No, on, off-street, so you're.
So on your, on your property?
Off-street parking laws as they exist in our current ordinance will stay exactly the same. So if I have six parking spots and on my property, I can have six drivers. If I only have four, then I can have four, four vehicles, four drivers. Sorry, vehicles, not drivers, multiple drivers. So, thank you. Is that clear? Okay. So, of course, some questions. I'd like to know what the inspections, so it refers to twenty-five dollars to cover inspections. What inspections is that? What are we talking about?
Ken, would you like to?
It's really, and I apologize, what's up on the screen is not the exact verbiage that's in the code. So the, the verbiage of the code does not mention that it's to cover constant inspections. It's a registration, recognizing that there is some administration and inspection efforts that are ongoing.
So our inspection is going to be done?
So, no, there's not a planned inspection unless it's determined by staff that there needs to be followed. So there is written in the code a provision for providing pictures of life safety issues. They will need to provide pictures to us, and they will need to sign, and these things are not all specifically stated out in the ordinance because they're policy and they're documents. But what, what we plan to do is to have a checklist of items that will need to be followed or met according to building code, and they can provide us a picture of how that's being met. And then they will sign that this is their property and this is being met. And so that will not require us to go out and check every single property. But what it does is put the burden on the property owner that, that they have said that they have this and they've provided evidence that they have it, that they're meeting code. But then if for some reason it's determined that they haven't, then it's, it's a problem that they will have to reckon with.
A follow-up question that is which building code? Which building code would these?
International Building Code that is adopted by the city.
Okay, so the current version, like the twenty sixteen current version? So an existing accessory apartment that may have been built in nineteen eighty will now have to be up to the current code standard?
If there is any remodeling to be done, then it'll have to meet city code. If they're otherwise meeting code, again, we're not, we're not going through and making sure that all the studs are exactly whatever, but, you know, we're, we're going to be looking at the safety issues and meeting codes.
I'm not trying to pin you down or anything, I'm, I'm just trying to get some explanation on that.
Subsection L, Building Code, all construction and remodeling shall comply with building codes and ordinance requirements in effect at the time of construction or remodeling. In accordance with Utah Code, section ten nine eight five-one-one-point-five, changes to. In accordance with Utah Code, section ten nine eight five one one point five, changes dwellings, egress windows. What they're saying is there's a reference to this state code section which allows some modifications or some groundblowing in of existing dwellings that were constructed pursuant to the code.
Okay. And is there, uh, a lot of times there's a percentage of remodel that's associated with the invocation of code code compliance? You know, if there's anything.
That's an address factor.
Okay.
So that would be subdivision.
So I guess that's something I'd ask for the council is what's what's the council's intent on that? To be considerate of an existing accessory apartment in a building that may have been built a long time ago? And the burden that may be implored on that homeowner to try and bring it up to current code standard? If that's what's required. It sounds like there is some leniency in there, which again would come back to the council on what they want to see for implementing um the level of requirements on that. I can understand things like the, I can't even think where they call the fire. Smoke detectors, thank you. Uh, smoke detectors, things like that, they're really easy, they're cheap to be able to put in. But if there's an uh an an egregious issue with the window wells, that's very expensive to go in and cut concrete in the basement wall to try and make sure they're big enough for a fireman on an existing building. That's a huge burden on a homeowner. Um, and then what what's the what's the purpose of the multiple addresses? I don't understand. Okay, so it's just added information for the public safety.
When they show up in the house, they can see it was apartment B or B. So they know where to go in to get them. Otherwise, you're waking up the whole house.
Okay. So I I understand and I've had some discussions with some public safety individuals on that. Um, I'll address that in a minute. And then, okay, and I think those were my questions. I have a couple of statements. Um, the economic concept of private property refers to the rights owners have to excuse exclusive use of disposal of a physical object. Property is not a table, a chair, or an acre of land. It is the bundle of rights which the owners is entitled to employ on those objects. The founding fathers upheld the economic view of property. They believed that private property ownership as defined under common law pre-existed government. The state and federal governments were the mere contractual agents of the people, not the sovereign lords over them. All rights not specifically delegated to the government remained with the people, including the common law provisions of private property. In brief, private property refers to the rights of owners to use their possessions, which are enforceable against non-owners, even the government. The British law provided a clear picture of ownership to the founding fathers. The common law has three pillars: private property, tort liability, and the law of contract. Private property and tort liability are inexorably intertwined. No one has the right to infringe upon the legitimate rights of others. I have some concerns. I I am in favor of accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units as they're commonly called. I am contractual law. Um, some of the concerns I have with parking, we kind of addressed those, so I'm not going to go over those again. The registration, I am not in favor of registration. I do not see the benefit in it. I do not see the need. Um, I understand from a public safety standpoint how that could be beneficial. However, I disagree. And the reason I disagree is because if my child calls nine one one and they give incorrect information on where they are in that house, I want my public servants to be able to go in and search the entire house. Likewise, if there's a gunman that came into my house and one of my daughters calls up in the upper room, yet my sister-in-law who's in the basement is injured as well, I want them to search the entire house, not just one specific location. So the the multiple address and multiple information may help for a few seconds, but I want my public servants to be able to search my entire house if there's an incident or a fire or anything else. It's it's the entire thing. I do not see the purpose or use whatsoever for having multiple addresses because in my opinion, if they're called out, they should search every square foot of that building. Um, there's. Sorry, here. Um, so basically, I mean, I, there, there's a lot of things I I understand with this ordinance. The fact, I am not willing to give up my constitutional rights for allowing the city or anyone else to have some additional information. That is not something that I'm willing to do. I believe in the constitutional property rights. And if there is something that my house or my property is doing to be a nuisance or inconvenience to somebody else, then that's complaint-based. Bring it up to me. As neighbors, we'll talk about it. If there's something I can do, we'll take care of it. If not, then it has to go through the correct judiciary system of the the legal actions. That's why we have three branches of the of of government, so we can go through those things properly. Uh, I believe in limited government. I believe that we should, as a city, value limited government and only import and apply registration and regulation when utmost necessary means are are implored on that. So um, I urge the council to consider this. Definitely, we do need an accessory apartment to be legalized because that is an inalienable right for property rights. However, the regulations assigned associated with it, I am not in agreement with.
Hi, I'm Debbie Hong, nine nine two east, one hundred north. Um, I'm in favor of the apartments except for I do like the owner occupied. And I do like, I do like the registration. Um, when we moved into our first apartment when we got married, there were some wacky things in that apartment. And it was probably not a very safe place to live. So I would like for protection of the the people renting that they would be able to have somebody regulating, okay, yeah, the wiring is safe. Um, there is separate access, things like that. So I think that that's good. Um, and I do agree with Lisa and Matt and Drew about just having a parking space for each car. I think that makes sense and that's an easy way to to regulate it. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Michael Budd, nine thirty-six north, fourteen twenty west. I wanted to elaborate a little bit on this concept that we're talking about, health, safety, welfare. I want to point out, we live in a world where technology makes it possible that we could all have our homes, the blueprints and everything, completely scanned. Anytime we needed to make any changes, we would have to submit those so that the, you know, that was all kept up to date. Any responder that came to our home then could pull up a three-dimensional uh map of our home. We could be chipped so that they would know right where we were in the home. We could have all of our medical history identified in all of that. But that does not describe a world of liberty. In a world of liberty and freedom, there's risk, there's accidents, there's tragedy, there's death. And there's a people who rely on the mercy of God in those times. So although it would be great and efficient to have all of these regulations, and I think that's why they're listed and why we're wanting them. And that's why I pointed out when I spoke earlier of, I would like some statistical data that shows this is really a problem. It would be, it would be best that we recognize that we're not going to be able to solve all these things. We need to choose. Do we want to keep our freedoms and our rights? Which a right, we do not have to ask permission to government for. That's what a right is. We do not have to ask for permission. There's not a splitting off of that right. It's not, I have half of this right and this is okay for government to take over. A right is just that. There's no permission needing to be asked. So we have to choose. Do we want our freedom, which includes all of this risk? Or we want the regulation for our security? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Blaine Thatcher, one twenty north, fourteen hundred east. Um, I'm hearing a few things that that caused me some concern and um I wasn't planning on speaking on this issue. I feel I need to. Uh, one, I'm a little surprised that there wasn't more mention and discussion uh about the committee that was organized by the city to discuss this issue. Uh, and one person mentioned it in their comments. Um, but from the people I've spoken to who served on that committee, uh, it seemed to me that that committee made a strong recommendation that there really was no compelling interest or need for this level of reg- uh regulation. And so uh it seems somewhat of an omission by the city to to not present that information. Um, the other thing I'd like to say is uh I I'm not seeing any evidence presented that would really show an increased risk uh to the city, uh first responders, et cetera, uh simply by having an accessory apartment, any in increased risk above what could potentially already exist uh in any given home. So um, again, I'm I'm not seeing any compelling reasons for this level of of regulation. Uh, the thing that I think I'm most concerned about is what has been expressed here as an assumption uh of a right. And specifically, it was mentioned that there is assumed or someone has created a property right that includes the right to regulate and dictate what others can do with their inalienable right to own property. And so I'm I'm confused where this has has been created or developed because I don't see it in the law. Uh, the constitution uh guarantees each of us the inalienable right to property. And uh I think that's fairly well-established. But to extend that right to to property, to assume that I can regulate and or dictate what my neighbor or somebody across town can and cannot do is really a false assumption. And I don't believe a right that actually exists. And so that, I think, is a conceptual problem that I think is is being assumed here as a reason for going about this type of regulation and concerns me greatly.
Glenn, could you, could you help us? Where is is the city portraying what you just said?
No, I was just saying in some of the comments I've heard made here, you know, that they've, several people have expressed that that is their right to dictate what their neighbor or others can do with their property. And and I believe that's a false assumption. I don't believe that is a correct right. Uh, nowhere near, uh, obviously, people don't want to be overly affected, but I think that can easily be handled through normal means of neighborly communication, et cetera. I don't think is a call for government intervention. Um, the, and and I certainly don't think that if there is some assumed right there that it even compares in any way, shape or form to the inalienable, inalienable right each of us have to actually own property.
Anyone else?
Ron Tuze, sixteen fifty-five, Wesley Circle. Um, just a question, possibly clarification. It looks great, this idea we have presented here. Um, I'm in favor of the accessory apartments, by the way. But um, just this uh this period about the ordinance, when it goes into effect and about the requirement for registration and the failure to register after that period. Um, let's say, right now, I do have a a mother-in-law apartment and we have aging parents and possibility of them coming to stay with us. We had one that we had planned on staying with us that passed away before they could stay with us. Um, but we now have a vacant accessory apartment, I mean, a vacant mother-in-law apartment and kids that want to move into it and or not, we don't want them to move in, so it's vacant. So. So it's it's just, it's a vacant, it's a vacant space. We're occupying it with us. So. Um, but let's say, it would say, based on this, that uh we kept it as a mother-in-law apartment. Our kids decided to come in and stay with us and this ordinance went into effect and it was a mother-in-law apartment, would we be required to register that with this ordinance? Well, then, let's say down the road, our kids all decide to move on and it's past the two-year registration. What happened? We come, well, okay, but it's, the way this is written, we only have two years after the ordinance goes into effect to register.
You currently do not have an accessory apartment.
Correct. It's a mother-in-law apartment.
Therefore, this two-year period doesn't apply to you or anybody else that has a mother-in-law apartment.
Okay.
But the day that you choose to turn it into a rental for someone else, you register.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I just wanted to make sure. That's why I was asked, that's, I was asking that for clarification. Make sure that we weren't gonna, you know, come in and try to register and say, hey, how long have you had this? It's like, well, since we built the home and they're gonna say, well, you gotta pay an extra thousand bucks, buddy. Just want to make sure. All right.
Kira Harris, sixty Alpine Drive. Um, first, I really, 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 really like Provost's. That's basically word for word what I would prefer. That's mostly the main part that's always been bothering me. Um, something else I've kind of been thinking about is it would probably be good to take a look at some of the existing state laws regarding rentals. I think some of that might already be covered here and you wouldn't need to be repeating it. Um, I might be making this up, but I'm pretty sure that smoke detectors are one of those things that like landlords have to provide already. Um, so I think that, you know, where people are saying, hey, we don't need this much regulation, that might be true. It might already be covered in already existing state law.
Can you address that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Smoke alarms? Smoke alarms or state laws that already govern uh rent renting and.
Well, no, I can't address what what state codes they're. But but we we are asking uh with the registration of the apartment that certain safety features such as smoke alarms be provided and that they shall provide a picture and indication that they have done that. So definitely if our our city, our state codes that regulate that, then then those definitely will need to be met.
I I I just thought smoke alarms department.
Do they are?
And then Tina, from a, from a state city perspective, what's the rules on state law and city law?
Well, um, it goes from the general to the specific. So there are some areas where the state has preempted the field, which I don't believe in our tenant law in this particular case of one of those areas. So the city is allowed to regulate, adopt local ordinance. I agree, if there's something in the state law that is already mandated, then maybe that's something we forgot about our ordinance and cannot be redundant. But on the other hand, it's really handy for us to want to know what the accessory apartment ordinance says and requires to have it in one place. One of the complaints that we get quite frequently is that people will have to go into more than one area of the code, our own code, let alone look in the state and then come look in ours too, to find out what's required. So.
So we do refer to state code when it exists?
You can.
And and the the specific code we talked about is the International Building Code, right?
We adopt that, we adopt that by the state.
Anyone else?
I was gonna speak as a resident.
I was gonna speak like President of the United States.
Name an address, please?
You all right? Uh, Dean Hale, two forty south, thirteen hundred east. Uh, I've heard a lot of talk tonight about how what's driving the regulations behind these, which I think there should be none, is the is is safety and and welfare of the occupants. And yet I'm looking here at the text of the of the ordinance itself where it aligns purpose and intent and it doesn't men- it mentions none of those. I'll just read it really quickly. So the purpose and intent, the purpose and intent of the accessory apartment ordinance is to recognize residential character. is to recognize residential character of Pleasant Grove City and to provide for supplemental living accommodations in the community, as well as provide for supplementary income opportunities for property owners. These provisions are intended to provide for affordable housing with reasonable limitations to minimize the impact on neighboring properties and neighborhoods. When I re- read things like minimize the impact of neighboring properties, neighborhoods, or, um, recognize residential character, what I, I, I hear that as a euphemism for, uh, restricting personal property rights. Um, it's nice that they are willing to allow us to raise a little extra money, um, but is that really the intent, and why does the government care what we do with our property? That's a concern. My other, the other thought I have regarding any of these regulations, the fact that the city hasn't enforced this for years, and I know probably a couple of dozen people who have these apartments, and I would say the majority of them are in a situation where if they had to comply with building regulations, or, or, uh, um, where, or had to put, do away with it for whatever reason, uh, to meet these needs here, that it'd be a, um, a tremendous financial burden on them. And, um, I'm sure there's those that we can imagine who would have no problem meeting this financial requirement, but, uh, for the least of these, and for, for charitable reasons, I say, we, we shouldn't, um, burden anybody with these kinds of regulations, just because. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Tina, I know we've discussed health, safety, and now, is there a way to include that to make sure that that's part of the work?
Sure. Do you want to, let's see, add to the purpose statement?
And Ken, with respect to the, the questions that have come up, there's a theme about, um, apartments that have existed when they were legal, apartments that have come up when, when the city didn't have, uh, ordinance allowing them. And then, going forward, can you explain how the code and the building requirements work, where you have prior approved apartments, uh, those that were built during the time and periods, uh, in the code, and what happens with new ones? With respect to what code are they trying to meet? What, what the, what the burden's going to be?
Okay, so if there's any new construction, any remodeling of construction of, of a building that, or has been identified as not meeting certain safety factors as we've identified in the code here, including the, uh, the fire.
Smoke detectors.
Smoke detectors, sorry. Those things are, are going to be handled immediately upon registration. Now, if a, a, uh, accessory apartment has been constructed previously under a previous code and permitted by the city, then we're not going to go in and retroactively require new things of that. But, um, I think it has been pointed out, um, well, that there, perhaps in the, in the verbiage, it's not completely clear as what happens with the, the requirement for registering existing apartments, and I would actually.
Existing apartments that were good.
Not permitted.
When it was not permitted.
Yeah. Not permitted, but previously consor-
Or existing now.
It could be mother-in-law apartments.
Right. And the requirement is, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what that requirement is, so that it's, we don't imagine a very obscure amount of money or burden on the individual, being more precise as to what this is.
Well, and, and here's the difficulty, it's, it's very difficult for us to spell out all the pertinent building code requirements that may apply in any given situation. That's why we need to say that it needs to meet current building code. If it has not been permitted by the city, and they want to be recognized as permitted and legal, then it needs to meet building code. That can be very expensive for some people. It may be impossible for some people. It may be just a, a small amount for, for others, but we can't specify and dictate all the potentialities that may occur.
But you did say current building code.
Yeah.
So, anything that, that popped up during the time when it was not permitted, and anything going forward, we'll have to meet the, the current building code. But the method of identifying that is not inspection.
Right.
So, you're asking for photos of certain individuals?
Right.
So, we're saying nineteen eighty-five, you know?
Right. Let me just add, and I know this isn't a popular statement, but it's, it's a reality. There are situations where it simply won't be permitted, and there may be existing situations that simply cannot meet a basic level of requirement. This code was not put together to create a situation where anybody, anywhere, can have an accessory apartment without regulation, without concern for any health, safety, welfare issues. We're, we're not trying to make it so everybody can have it. We're making it possible so that those properties that can meet a certain basic level of health, safety, welfare issues can be permitted.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ken, could you pass that basket over here? No, if you get, not really.
Are you gonna speak in the city?
I'm gonna speak as a resident, so, dig in, those six forty South, Luck Drive. Um, a couple of my own personal experiences. So, when, when I bought the home that I'm in now twelve years ago, walked through it with the, with the home inspector as we did our, our pre-buy inspection, and he had his little doohickey that he plugged into all the outlets, and everything's going fine. We get downstairs, um, in, in one quarter of my basement, um, the previous owner was an avid train, model train enthusiast, so the entire room is chest-high, completely laid out. He plugged into the wall there and got kind of a puzzled look, and I think on one plug, the polarity was reversed, and I think on one plug, I think my ground might be hot. And so, to me, that, that highlights some of the problems that can arise when we don't have somebody looking at it and double-checking, because mistakes get made, even when you have a professional coming, sometimes mistakes are made. The other thing is, we live in a community, and we're relatively close to each other. My parents come and visit, and with, almost without exception, my dad will at some point in time comment about my neighbor's dogs variously negotiating over which one is in control of my yard, because we don't have any pets. And he, he always expresses annoyance to that, and I have to remind him, well, Dad, where you live, you're on three acres, and you have the smallest lot in the area. And so, there's some trade-offs with living closer when we're in a community like ours. And we've done a great job in our community. Lots of people want to live here. That's part of the reason why, unfortunately, it's more expensive to live here, because the demand is increasing that price. And I'd rather us not do anything that would make Pleasant Grove more affordable, if it meant making it a worse place to live. As we look at things related to the regulation side of it, I'm reminded of the aspects in what I, in where I work professionally, both here at the city now and previously at UDOT, dealing with specifications and requirements. Most of those are generated through problems. We had a problem, we didn't get what we wanted, and so, we wrote something down to help better describe what we wanted, or to avoid a negative outcome that we had. And as you look at a specification, or as you look at an ordinance, what's missing is a great narrative and history as to why we're doing this thing. And sometimes you look at it and go, well, nobody violates this rule. Why do we even have to state that this is a rule? It's because we're, we weren't around when that wasn't clear. Sometimes the rule doesn't make any sense anymore. We've moved beyond that, and, and really, an overhaul of code makes sense. Um, those things come about through, through the granted right of looking, or the, the legal theory of regulating things on health, safety, and welfare. And in my personal view, health and safety are pretty easy to define, where it gets a little vague as we get into the welfare idea. And as cities and communities have written regulations, there's been questions about what something means, and those questions have advanced through our system of government, and the Supreme Court, in many cases, has ruled on issues and said, hey, cities, you can do this, or you can't do this. Uh, it, it was a common means of regulating types of people in a community by saying, hey, you've gotta be family, until you had a court saying, no, family, families can be groups of unrelated people that live together like a family. That, that took a legal ruling on that. So, we have a long history of legal rulings, whether you like them or not. We have a great example here in PG with our Ten Commandments case, that ruled on a very narrow part of the law that the Supreme Court established. And so, yes, there are some things that are different than in the fundamental documents, because using the framework that's provided there, we've moved beyond that. I'm really torn on this particular issue. I'm sensitive to the idea, we had one resident at the planning commission meeting get up and say, you know, I'm in R1, I'd like to be in an R1. This does increase the base density of the R1 zone. That's not necessarily a bad thing. I am personally, and, and I've stated this last time, that we had this issue come up, I'm in favor of enforcing our current ordinance. I think a lot of the issues that we face can be addressed by the current ordinance without writing it down again in a different spot. Um, I think the biggest challenge that we face as a community is that, right now, the council hasn't funded that enforcement side. We used to have a code enforcement officer, somebody who was dedicated to that, that's all they did. It was not just complaint-based, they went out and did kind of an active look for those obvious problems. And when we had her turned, turned down, that was a position that was easy to eliminate because that person moved on. I think that's important to have. It's not always easy to go and talk to a neighbor. Sometimes there can be very imposing physical differences between neighbors that make it uncomfortable to go and approach someone where it might be conflict. It's nice to be able to call the city and have a third-party mediator come and help work out that situation. And where I think the council, if, if you decide to adopt this for our community and move forward, I really think it'll be remiss to not fund that position and have that there, because as has been pointed out, if you have rules and don't enforce them, what's the point? We're just hoping that everybody will magically know about them and follow them. There are many examples of people who don't follow regulation. That fine-tuning of taking care of it helps address them before they become serious problems. A lot of our ordinance is written around problems that have been there, that we've since resolved, and because we don't let them get out of hand, we don't realize how bad it can be. Thanks.
Okay, would anyone else like to address this? Thanks, guys.
My name's Julio Homer, I live nine thirty-five east, five ten north, Pleasant Grove, Utah. Um, first of all, uh, I, I've listened to quite a few people, and most of them, the last week I was here. And one thing that concerns me is, uh, is it gonna, the laws are gonna change later because we just see it today that, you know, it changed from May to Will, so it could change later, you know, kind of looking on. Like you guys, I am also a, I can say I'm a public servant. Um, financially, it kinda, unfortunately, the government dictates my wages, and during the last two years, we end up getting less and less. And so, I have to, my family have to do what we got, you know, we have not much. So, when I rented to somebody, it helped a lot. And the lady that was here, she said that some regulation is needed because she was renting an apartment, and there were certain things that need to be done. And I understand her, but there is no law in the United States or a commandment that states that she had to stay there. She could find wherever, you know, it suits her purp- purpose. I'm a strong believer in the property rights and the constitution. I think I live in the greatest country on earth, but at the same time, I, there are certain things that, it's not perfect, of course, but I do think that having, uh, allow people to use their property to, to make an income or something, that is something that you do well, and you yourself have done that, and you, and so, anyway, I do not believe that we need to regulate everything in our lives, because when we do so, then we, some people do things in the, they take rights away in the name of safety, and then at the end, we end up doing nothing. I was, when I was in Afghanistan, I saw some of those things happening, where people say, oh, this is gonna be a good idea, and women had no rights whatsoever. And so, I think that's, uh, when we start regulating things, we end up in trouble. The other thing is, um, there was something mentioned about they need to be fired, about the state. We had the opportunity to adopt a little girl. She, they came to our house, and somebody in the state came in. And she said, well, you have, she has to have this many square footage. You have, so I said, so you want me to put my two little children, I have four kids, you want me to put all those four kids in two bedrooms while she has her own bedroom? I said, you know, my kids are not gonna like that because they're gonna say, you know, there's gonna be animosity. So, anyway, then I said, well, where are the fire alarm, fire extinguishers, where are the fire alarms, or some things? Oh, do you have guns in your house? You cannot have guns while you have it. So, I'm going like, seriously? And so, anyway, so we had to get, well, get rid of it. And then I said, well, what happens when you adopt, are you gonna check on us? No, you can do whatever you want. So, I said, what you're gonna, I said, then those things don't make any sense to me. So, anyway, um, and so, what I, you know, once again, I think, uh, we just need to, instead of, I don't know if you guys are voting on it today or not, I'd probably maybe take a little more time to reconsider those, those things. And, uh, when I came to the meeting, they talked about how Provo does things. Well, you know, Provo is its own city, and the reason I don't live in Provo is because I like Pleasant Grove better. And, and there is a, I, I like to use the Bible a little bit. There's a story in the Bible where, uh, the prophet Samuel comes and talks to, they talk to some, to some of the people, to the council, and say, well, hey, you know what? We don't want a prophet, we want a king. Because why do you want a king? Because the other nations have kings. And they say, well, if you put this, you're gonna create all these problems. And, and, you know, you know what happened in the story of that. And so, we don't need to be like the other cities. We just need to take care of our, take care of our community and take care of our citizens, because I, as a, if I am renting, or if I am giving it to somebody, I'm gonna make sure my property is taken care of, because after all, I'm paying for it. And if you, you know, when, uh, you are providing services to the children of your house, you can dictate who can go in there. In fact, there are rules in there, right? So, the city doesn't have to tell you what to do, you do it yourself because you want to protect your, your property. And so, I think it's okay to let people have apartments. I think regulating them, and trying to put everybody's name in a registry, is not a good idea. And coming from, uh, when I was in, once again, when I was in Afghanistan, somebody decided that it was a good idea for all of us to write down our names and tell us where exactly where we slept and what our rent was. So, the list got lost. So, guess what happened within two weeks? All of a sudden, rockets start coming out where, where we were, because somebody said it was a good idea to figure out where everybody was, in the name of safety. So, we told them, hey, if you wanna know, you know, where we are, talk to the, you know, talk to our commander, he knows where everybody is. We don't need to give it to you. So, the same thing, if you guys wanna know where everybody is, you already know, you guys have our city bills we get every month. So, I hope you guys, not only just take a hasty decision, but also pray about it. I really think about everybody here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. My name's Ashley Brinkum, and I'm at nine forty-five east center. And I didn't even want to stand up because I had to give my name and my address, so I can guarantee you, I probably wouldn't register an accessory apartment. Um, I am for accessory apartments, I'm not for the registering. Um, I get that for safety reasons, but I mean, it's not like you're gonna go around, you could go around to the whole community and you would find these problems, and you're not going to. Um, you're not going to do it to the mother-in-law apartments, and you're, it's just because now people are paying money to live there. So, I don't know, you say it's in the name of safety, but just, no, I'm for the accessory apartments, but not for, I am for the parking laws, but I think that's a, should be a city wide law. You know, if you have a car, you should be able to park it on your property, and so then it shouldn't even matter if you have an apartment or not, and that would cover that one, which is probably most people's complaints about neighbors that have apartments.
Would you even improve our registration without the fee, or is no registration allowed?
It concerns me when he says, um, like, oh, we'll just take pictures, and then if we want to, then we'll come on site, like, then, there's never been a def, like, I haven't heard one definite, it's been like, oh, we just wanna see some safety stuff. Well, what, what's the safety stuff? Like, I just, I don't even have an accessory apartment, but I know a lot of people that do, and. And, I mean, what are you, you keep saying, like, we, there's, we have, we just have some concerns, but we just want some pictures. But then if we have concerns with those pictures, we do have the right to come and inspect your home, which to me would just stop me from registering altogether. So, and then, it's a complaint-based law, so you probably just wouldn't get caught. Not that that's a good way to, thank you.
Jennifer Baptista, 1300 East, 32 North, 1300 East. I really didn't wanna get up and talk, but I felt that I needed to a little bit. I was blessed for the first appointment, assignment to get this as the planning commission. So, you guys blessed me very well. So, we have been going back and forth on this a lot, and it's, it's been pretty brutal. And it's very public, and it's on public meetings and public notes, that I have a situation where I would qualify for an accessory apartment, except that I live in it, and I'm actually on the deed, so I'm not, I'm, it's two property owners. So, I have my in-laws on one level and I'm on the other level. I don't have to abide by any of these rules or regulations. So, going in there, I had nothing to lose. Our chair, Drew Armstrong, has openly admitted that he has, and he has an illegal accessory apartment. So, we have been battling that department on this issue. And so, everybody's living situation has come into play. My first initial understanding that the city council was requesting was that you wanted registration only. You wanted people to come out of the, out of the dark and register that they have them, because we wanna know that they're existing, we wanna know that they are there. So, that's kind of the concept that I went in, is the whole point was, we just wanna register people so that we know that they exist, we know how many exist, and if, if for a safety reason, the police officers would have at least the knowledge that they were at certain locations. And then it turned into more of, you know, a health-safety thing, and, and that required all these, you know, regulations. And then, it turned into a conversation of, we're just punishing people because they're collecting money. And, and that's the way it came across for me the whole time. Every time the conversation changed, every time we got into a different scenario or a different discussion, it came back to, we need to do this, and is this gonna cost the person more money? And I'm like, why do we have to do that if it's just gonna cost people more money? Well, because they're paying rent, because they're collecting an income, because they're making money off of this. And if they're making money off of this, then they should, they have the money to pay for it. I totally disagree with that concept. And I fought that concept all the way through the process, and I still fight that conflict. I was the only planning commissioner that was voting, I'm an alternate, but I was, I've been a voting member, to say no to this. One, because I think the regulations are not fair. If I'm not required to do that, just because I'm not collecting rent, doesn't, you know, why should I force that on somebody who is? It makes no sense to me. We are literally punishing people for collecting an income, using their property for whatever they need to use their property for, to either survive, to subsidize their, their income, to help make their payments, or just because they wanna make some money. I, I don't, I, I am frustrated with the whole concept. And I am, I was so conflicted, because I had to vote against even allowing it legally to exist, because that was my only option. I want accessory apartments to be allowed. I don't know that they need to be called accessory apartments, I don't know what they should be called. I think it's, you don't use your property the way you want to, and, you know, the liability is not on the city, and we may, we have that very clearly defined to us, that we're making regulations that the city is not liable for. Only the person that's renting it out is their liability. So, why are we regulating somebody else's liability? I, I, I just, I can't even fathom why we're doing this. So, I, I have lots of concerns, and, and to me, it's, it's literally punishing people for using their property for whatever purpose they need. And, and I know tons of people that if you, if this goes into place and they're required to hit, hit certain codes, that they will lose their homes. That is the only thing keeping them in their houses. And that concerns me, it concerns me big time. And I don't think that we should be in the business of kicking people out of their house or helping them lose their house. And the other thing is, is the renter has the rights to sue or to move. Why, why is it that we have to go in and tell them that they shouldn't be living there? If they live there and it's not the quality of life that they want, they have the right to move or sue.
Ken Millet, 490 South, 1100 East. I'm here because I have a neighbor that's wanting to buy a home, and it is equipped for an accessory apartment, and he says that'll help him to be able to pay for the home. And also, I have a big home and I've had my children with me, and one day I might need that accessory apartment so that I can survive, I don't know. So, I think it's a good deal if we can do it. Thank you.
Melanie Pryor, 640 South Spur Street. Melanie Pryor. So, just to give some more examples of the way we can not control or control things, I, I don't, I don't think we can control everything. So, I, I think if we, if we can't enforce regulation, maybe we shouldn't regulate. And, safety, just a few issues that have been brought up. Safety as regards, as regarding accessory apartments isn't a direct, it's not necessarily a plausible argument, because safety has to do with structure, not, not with what you do with it. It depends on how someone wired the entire home or a part of it, it's not in relation to the choice of what you do with it. And then, here's a couple of examples in the community. There's a 5,000-square-foot home with a mother-in-law, and when it was built, the owner was required to sign a paper that he could not rent it. And then, there's a home that's a 2,000-square-foot home with an accessory apartment being run as an accessory apartment, as we're calling them now. So, to determine how we can regulate is just something that, I, I don't know if it's necessarily practical to put more regulation in place. And I am, I am in agreeance that we should support individuals who would like to have additional income from a part of their property that is being rented to individuals that aren't necessarily part of their family. So, I don't know how much we can control, and, and I think that's the intent, is to help support and strengthen the community through responsibly, encouraging our assistants to be responsible, but it's always gonna be their choice whether they're responsible or not. So, I, I don't know if, I don't know if the wording will change their choice to be responsible or not.
John Pryor, 640 South Spur Street. I'll be quick. I've been here sitting, might as well say my voice. I'm for accessory apartments, and I am for a lot less restrictions. I understand that we are a people of restriction, that, that is how we work, and it is balanced as the head commissioner of the building department stated during last week's meeting. And it's, it's a fight, a balance, and all that between differences of people who can afford, people who can't, can't, can't afford, don't remember what I said already. But my plea as a citizen and someone who is standing here before you, pleading that you follow, listen, and seriously consider the, the strong majority of voices who have spoken, who have taken their time to actually be active participants in this society, which is small, and in terms, this is probably how the United States works, that we are fighting for what we can. So, please, I am for shrinking down, whatever that's called, that keeps us regulations. Thank you.
Kira Harris, 60L Pine Drive, sorry. I do think it is really odd that the only difference between a mother-in-law and an accessory is who's living there, and if you're related, there's basically no regulation, but if you're not related, suddenly we have to regulate it? I feel like it's kind of hypocritical of us, and we either need to regulate both or regulate neither, not one or the other.
And I came here to listen about the roads. Hi. And it's last, no, I had a thought.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought everybody knew my name and address. 1380 East, 150 North, the worst road in town. I had a thought, and last time I came, I had a thought and I didn't get up and I wish I had. So, I thought, if it is a safety measure, and the people call 911, shouldn't the people that answer the call ask if it's an accessory apartment, ask if it's another apartment, ask if it's another room? That should answer some of the safety problems, shouldn't it?
Okay, if there's no one else, we're gonna close the public hearing. You guys okay with that?
Yep.
Sorry, Ken?
I just wanted to add a few comments.
Speaking of director, as a citizen.
I'm not a citizen of Pleasant Grove, so I can't do that. So, as director of community development, let me just say a few things. I think that perhaps, well, I'll just start by saying that by and large, I believe that the differences that have been addressed here that are either for or against the proposal the ordinance proposed are by and, by and large ideological. And that planning staff, planning commission, and all the efforts of those people who have assisted community development through the years to come up with what we've come up with have brought forward our best proposal. If we are to amend it further, I think it goes beyond community development and planning, it becomes then more ideological, perhaps even political, whatever you wanna call it. I'm not sure, certainly we would want to be a part of and participate, but I'm not sure that it would be the best effort to send it back to community development to further revise or further study or further whatever. I think it really comes down to ideological situations. That's my opinion.
So, recognizing that everyone who sits there is looking at it from a, is this my job, and this is what I'm advising the, this is how we have to do it in order to execute the ordinances and things that not. And everyone sitting up here, particularly those voting, is doing it politically, right? And they're politically elected to represent.
Sure. And so, and that's, I fully agree and understand. I'm just saying that should we desire to make further greater changes, perhaps it's not the best arena to work with it in a planning forum. Understood. Okay. So, I just wanted to say, there's, there's a few things based on tonight's discussion that I agree that perhaps we can add to, make it a little bit better. To the purpose statement, I wrote down a few words that we could add at the very end that says, "And to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the property owners and residents of accessory apartments." To letter P, where it talks about accessory apartment registration, we could add at the very beginning, any person owning an existing accessory apartment that has not previously been permitted in the city, or the other situations that we talked about there. So, I think that perhaps it's verbiage that is missing. I would go along with those types of changes. In regards to parking, we do have city code currently in 10183 that talks about parking. There is a requirement that dwellings have two parking stalls. That's just dwellings across the board. So, I think that goes in line with our existing code and our, and our ideology, our ideology for having two additional parking stalls beyond what a single-family home would require. That's how we came up with the six. So, there is consistency with current code. In regards to whether or not we should go with the Provo code of regulating parking so that there's not more vehicles than what could be reasonably, or could be parked off street. Yeah, I suppose we could go that way. I still have a problem with that, because you're talking about what the current existing situation is of the property, and if the property sells, then those needs changes. And so, we come into difficulties, I think we're just trying to set a base standard for what normally should work. That's, that's why we went that way rather than the way Provo does it. Is Provo's better? I don't know. Is it? Again, ideology. So, yeah, I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Jill Button, 936 North, 1400 West. As Ken just said, if it is a conflict of interest, some thoughts, why not have the citizens who have spoken up tonight write it up?
When you say conflict of interest.
Conflict, Ken just addressed that it's conflict of interest for the planning committee to readdress this.
Conflict ideology. What he's saying is, the planning department is responsible to come up with the recommendations, and they're looking at it from the perspective of the planning department. What's their role? And if we modify the code further, other than what it's written with the recommendations, then it starts leaving the realm of good planning, and it becomes pretty much a political decision for another department. So, he's saying he can't really take his department and delve down those paths, that's not his.
So, why not? So, I used the wrong term. So, why not take those who have stood and commented, had so many suggestions, thoughts, ideas, impressions, this is who's representing the community, why not have those citizens work together and write up a new resolution?
Stephen Loon again. There's been numerous committees of citizens that put this together, and they followed it really well. So, your suggestion has been done already. We really looked at all sides of it and tried to protect all rights when we put together what they're using and presenting tonight.
What if many of us, I mean. By the comments here tonight, that doesn't sound like that's how it's gone. It sounds like there's been many who object to the one you've proposed, so it doesn't sound like it's really representing what the citizens are wanting.
Jason Hunter, 680 East, 300 North. I think we always have to remember that there can be a silent majority, there can be a silent minority. So, there have been lots of comments about, I don't like this part about the law, I don't like this part. I think I would probably prefer you have enough parking off-street to accommodate I think I would probably prefer you have enough parking off-street to accommodate all the vehicles so that when grandma's renting her home, and she only has herself, and she's got this big two-car garage, she can, you know, in a driveway or whatever, that she can still have a tenant without having to go through the expense of adding an additional two spaces. But if the council decides, I mean, that's just my little thing with this, and we all have little issues. It's your job as the council to appease the majority. And I think that the majority, those that are for or against this specific thing even, commissioner that voted against it is for accessory apartments, so find a way to make them legal. If that means regulating to make sure that the neighbor doesn't have fifteen cars parked in his way or whatever, let's get it done. Thanks.
Ken, did you want another comment?
Well, it's a kind of address there. It's just, I've noticed this a lot when we get a certain group of people in a room, there can be a majority opinion in the room that does not necessarily reflect the majority opinion in the community. And I think that we need to consider all of the effort, all of the committees, all of the input that has come to us over the years. That represents a lot more than just what we've heard here tonight.
Would anyone else like to speak? Because if we close the public hearing just to keep it orderly, we're not going to take any more public comment. There's just too many of us here to do that on everything that's discussed. So now's an opportunity, if you have something that you'd like to address. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to discuss as a council. Let me just, I took some notes. They're not extensive, they're just bullet points of comments that were being made. Would it be fair to say that the majority of you here that have taken the time to come tonight and respond to this are in favor of accessory apartments without regulation? Is that, how many of you said that? How many of you did not say that? How many of you said you're in favor of accessory apartments with regulation? Was there somebody here that had a completely different opinion other than those two? Okay. And it seems to kind of come down to this concept of you want accessory apartments, and you don't want them to be regulated. It's kind of the issue here. And then some people would like to have accessory apartments with regulation, and they have reasons for that. And the ones that don't want regulation, it revolves around freedom, property rights, constitutional principles, being able to do what you want with what you own. Is that reasonable? And also, it's also the burden of money to make you go.
And lack of information for others.
Right. But the majority.
To be informed of others.
The majority who said, we want them without regulation, I think most of you said it has to do with being able to do what you want with your property. That's kind of what I heard. We're not going to take any more of that. And over here, I thought I heard some regulation, but it definitely had to do with this idea of if you're going to put something in place in order to make it safe for health, safety, and welfare, you need some form of regulation, minimal as it may be, to make sure that it's complied with so that the health, safety, and welfare is taken care of. Is that what we're hearing? Or do you have something completely different? So basically, you're all in favor of accessory apartments. It's the degree to which you would like regulation or no regulation. Even those that have said no regulation or without regulation, did you not? You each put something in there in your statement, or many of you did, like, yes, except for parking. Or yes, except for, you know, there's something in what you're saying that requires some kind of regulation. Not at all. So some of you, not at all. No regulation at all. And some of you, yes, regulation. Just no comments, just showing hands. Nodding heads, thank you. All right. So, so counsel, I think what we're dealing with here is not just a matter of language change to the code. This is, this is a fundamental question of do we allow accessory apartments or not allow accessory apartments? And if we allow accessory apartments, this particular group of people is going to allow them. But the rest of the things that you've done to take time to articulate, to, that other citizens have sat through hours of meetings trying to come up with what would be reasonable and fair to adjacent property owners, to the safety of those that live in the house, that those that are renting, all of these other things that have been considered. If you don't want any of that, just let us have accessory apartments. And by the way, some are saying, you don't really have the right to tell us whether you can have accessory apartments or not. That's kind of the gist of what we're hearing tonight. All right? So with that, let's open it up for comments from the council.
I just want to make one quick comment without getting a lot into the details of how I feel about it. But I find like, this has been discussed for years, and I find that regardless if you're for or against, there are the same arguments. So people that stood up to say we want to have accessory apartments give you the same argument as the person that stands up and says that they don't want them, or they exist, don't try to regulate it. And I find that interesting with this subject because it's the parking, it's this, it's all the same arguments, but each side gives the same argument. Mr. Callen, thank you.
I'll go. I have listed an accessory apartment, one we no longer do, so I'm glad I can speak to.
So you've been on TV since two months ago, or?
No, it's been years. So some of the notes I've taken. And first, I want to recognize the citizens committee, Ken's work, the planning committee, the last fifteen years of work, because I haven't come about in the last month or so. This is a lot of time and effort put into crafting and ordinance that the authority of citizens will support. To me, I don't understand the difference between a family of eight and a family of four and a family of four in the top and bottom, you know. Like, I just, I don't understand, I don't really see the difference. And we're talking about cars and parking spaces and people, like, it's still bodies in the house. And so I feel like it's kind of cracking down, people have an accessory apartment, and really it's the same number of people. Same with the blood, bloodline. And it's free, they get a full pass and no one else does just because they're made of blood. It's still a body in the house. That was, that was one thing. I am agreeing with owner occupied, otherwise because of duplex situation. I'm in favor of only one accessory apartment. I had a resident, and it wasn't just based on this, but it's not a townhome, multiple or more, you know, rooms in the, or situations in a home being opened up. I do like the Provo parking based on what I've heard tonight and the idea that it's number of people in the home. I do like the, you know, death and office street parking, I think that's a safety issue. I feel like the home has already been inspected, and if we ask people to make these changes, that would definitely be tens of thousands of dollars for people. And I can guarantee they're not going to come forward. They will not, if it has to be fully inspected and they have to remodel. As Jennifer said, the liability's on the homeowner. It's not city property, and it's, if something happens, liability's on the homeowner. Let's see, what else do I have? The thousand-dollar fine, I feel like drug dealers would get off easier than accessory apartment owners. I just, I think it's too much. I'm not sure why an outside entrance would be, some of the things that I've heard people, as I try to communicate with people online about their thoughts on this, I'm not sure why we have to require an outside entrance or the separate living spaces. That again, it might just be the right of the homeowner to decide who's living in their home. The thirty-day guest pass is, I don't know where that came from, I don't remember that. So I, I don't know, there's, there's things in here that are definitely, like I said, owner occupied. Maybe a change in the parking spaces to allow for whoever's living at the home. I just don't see a lot of difference, like I said, between a family of eight to ten and two families living upstairs and downstairs. I just, and they have cars, and they have, the house is still the same number of people. We're just saying what they can and can't do with their property. So, I mean, I know when they were trying to refinance our home, I had to go through a huge process with, this is several years ago, because at the time we had the accessory apartment, I had to jump through hoops. I've had residents call me saying, you know, we want to list our home, can we stay as an accessory apartment? And I had to tell them no because they weren't legal at the time. I don't feel like I should have to tell a property owner that. It could increase the value of their home, but they can't list it like that because they're not legal. So, I don't know, I, I, so when I said that, I said I had a hard time. Yeah, they do because we've made that, made that rule. The fee to, we can't, or we don't have the budget to enforce it, we can't hire a full-time enforcer. And I don't know what the full-time enforcer would do because how do you, he would drive around, but what, what are you looking for? If there's two multiple cars parked, that could be an issue for the city, not just, how do you know it's an accessory? I don't know. I think. I don't know, it's just, so those, anyway, those are my thoughts, random, and what I've heard not just tonight, but over the past four years, I've heard on the council, and this issue's been brought up, especially with the last year with the work of the planning commission and the committee, and what I've heard tonight, when I've asked a question on social media, the responses I've gotten back. So that's, that's my note.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay.
I do like the owner occupied. Even from the beginning, even when I was on the planning commission, this was an issue. Even when I moved into Pleasant Grove, you know, years ago, this was always an issue. And when we started this process, the only thing the planning commission started was keep it simple for the citizens. You know, we don't want to have too much overreach from us. My daughter lives in an accessory apartment at the Motley. And I go up there and visit, I get scared to death. It's a simple fact, just maybe because it's a gag factor, right? Maybe that's her. And I look at the wiring and all that, and I really hope that the homeowner can take a little more pride in his home. And just, because I know Motley has accessory apartment lots. I don't know, are they unfortunate? It doesn't look like it to me. Maybe because they don't have a budget, I don't know. So, the safety is a huge concern for me. Parking, maybe we do have to provide, I do like that one. The nineteen eighty-five issue and the one I have an issue with because of the cost. It's maybe huge. It's a large dollar amount. It is a balance of rights for us, listening to our citizens. One of the main things when I went door-to-door in this campaign was accessory apartments, listening to it. And they kept saying, keep it simple. You know, less regulation. Well, less regulation, I have an instance on my street with that. I would, I would love to have neighbors going to speak to each other, right? But I have, a neighbor comes and speaks to me and asks me to go speak on her behalf to another neighbor because she may feel intimidated. That's, that's her right, right? She can come to me, and I, I don't have a problem with speaking to anybody on that. Because sometimes our neighbors do overreach, right? That's just, that's just us, that's just citizens, that's the way we are. Things happen. When I go speak, things clear up for a week or two, and then they're back. Mrs. Yelly. State of mind, I don't know, answer your question. May seem simple, but sometimes I think the dispatcher people, when they get a call, people are in a panic. And they're more concerned about what's, what's going on, and in care of a loved one or a neighbor or a friend. And so sometimes that can be kind of the state of mind when they call. The dispatcher says, stop, tell me about what's going on, tell me if it's here or here. Would it be simple if they already had that information through there? I'd say yes, you know, the dispatcher's going to say, hey, this is accessory apartment, apartment downstairs, fully bigger. Couldn't be easy for them. But again, we get into older regulations. And so that's kind of really quick where I'm coming from and some of the, yes, it looks like everyone here is for accessory apartments. I made a simple walk around my neighborhood, one little block, five or six of them, just like that. And I live in a neighborhood where all the homes were built in the forties and fifties, right? And so some of the building codes there, I don't know if they're allowed back in the forties or fifties, I don't know if that was the time frame, I don't know. I do appreciate the citizen committees that have taken place and that have looked at this issue over many, many years, the planning commission, for their dedication and their service to this community and the work that they do. Because this is not easy, what we've brought up, right? Because if we tried to go off what we hear tonight, we'd have like three or four pages listed there. So it's, it was a hard thing. So thank you for your service. And so that's kind of where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Go ahead, Diana, ladies first. I'll take the last word.
Oh, good. So, of course, I have ten people that live in my home. I'm in the ebb, I'm waiting for the flow. My mom and dad just moved in, my eighty-six-year-old mom and dad. So I have, I have too many cars, I have too many people in my house. And so I, I'm looking at this, first of all, I am completely in favor of accessory apartments, if that's a shock to anyone. So I have a couple of things. There are, and to also address this, I have listened very intently, and I have had conversations with people who are not in favor of accessory apartments. So just because the majority of people in this room are for them, there are a lot of people who are not in favor of them. And this is why. There are zones in our city, and there is a perceived value, and I say perceived, perceived value for each of those zones. So for example, if you live in a R-one-nine, your lot size is nine thousand square feet. If you're in a R-one-twelve, your lot size is twelve thousand square feet. People buy a piece of property because of the perceived value. If you are living in a R-one-twelve, and we now put an apartment in your house, and you have two families that live there, it now is an R-one-six. So when I stand on my corner, I, and I stand on my neighbor's front porch, I look at my house, and I knock on his door, and I apologize. Because he bought in a R-one, I don't know, what am I, R-one-ten probably? And because of all the people in my house, I am an R-one, one, an R-one-one. So is there a way that we, so I believe that we're going to accept, we're going to permit accessory apartments, I'm feeling that. So is there a way for us to protect that perceived value of a neighbor, maintain the property right of each of those individuals? And, so I believe that there has to be a little bit of regulation to protect that value. I think, I think it's miniscule. I think that there are a few things we can do. First of all, if it's owner occupied, there is one utility bill, there's one owner that's listed, and so you're not dividing a zone. That's my reasoning behind owner occupied. Plus, I do believe that if the owner is there. Plus, I do believe that if the owner is there, the value, the safety and welfare is a little bit more owned. I don't care how many people live there. That is the right. If we're gonna start limiting occupants, then. I'm going to go to jail. Or I'm gonna pay a thousand dollars, I agree, I think a thousand dollars is not fair. I agree with the parking, one stall per vehicle. And I think. I think if there would be, I, I like, I like the sentence about. There, there's, there are several parts of this that are very good. On entrances, I'm, I'm not, I don't want my house to appear as a multifamily home. So I, I would actually like, so my people run through the house. Okay?
Last word.
I was gonna make a point that Diana made very well, I think it's an important point to note, because we have received communications. I've had a number of conversations with people that are not in this room, that do advance the idea that we should have no accessory apartments. That is not an unknown view in this city, thirty plus percent of our city population may have that perspective. And we've certainly heard eloquent arguments that permitting accessory apartments fundamentally changes the character of zones that are zoned as R one residential, because people want to have a single family in their neighborhood. And there were certain expectations people have when they buy their homes. I think it's a valuable, important point. I loved a lot of what Sid said tonight, in terms of recognizing the tremendous work and time that's been put into this particular resolution. And its ordinance, as it's suggested. But broadly speaking, and Ken's right, a lot of the discussion may revolve around ideology. But amongst a free society, amongst liberty-loving people, issues of aesthetics and issues of value of property should be handled through private consensual contracting. In a free society, we do covenants and conditions and restrictions that run with the land, that people can agree to voluntarily, everybody can participate in. If you're worried about what your fund interest looks like, or the fund interests of homes in your neighborhood, you create an HOA. You have solutions that are not government-based. And really, the, the role that government acts is not over aesthetics or preservative property values, it's over health and safety and welfare. And it's been made amply clear, and a lot of people have made the comment, I think they're excellent comments. There is no basis to distinguish between the regulations we impose, because some people are related versus some people who are unrelated. And if we go back a slide, I don't know if we can go back a slide, Dagan, or somebody who's got the slide control.
How far did you want?
Hold it there for a second, let me check this out. So, you know, here we talk about entrances cannot look like a duplex, that's an aesthetics question in my mind. That's overregulation. There's a fine that I think is excessive, I agree with the comments that were related to that. I think there are approaches to parking that can be done differently. You know, in, in all the other flood of emails and conversations I've gotten on this point, I'll just make this a total aside comment, but I got an angry email today from somebody who didn't like the fact that the city was imposing the way that we do our addressing on complexes in the city, and imposing as a government something that the post office and complex owners didn't want. And so I think that's interesting, that we would again suggest that we have the way to do that better than private property owners, I don't know if that's. But that's an aside. It's this sixth bullet point here, where we say building code must be met, which in my mind subsumes all of the concerns about health and safety. If we've got to meet building code, then we're taking care of the health and safety issues. And so what we're really hoping to regulate, and I think it's over aggressive regulation, is a bunch of aesthetic and other, you know, addressing and other considerations. We're meeting building code, then we've got the fire extinguishers, we've got the fire detectors, the smoke detectors, we've got the proper ingresses and the digresses. We have the needs met to make sure that a family that are all related are safe. And so we've also got the sufficient level of regulation with that one requirement alone, the building code has to be met, to suffice to cover the health and safety, the legitimate health and safety and welfare needs of everybody in that complex. Or everybody in that home, whether they're related or unrelated, we've got the needs taken care of sufficiently by meeting building code, in my view. And so I, I concur with the sentiments that have been expressed about, you know, data-driven, factual-based information, if we're going to regulate anything beyond that. Here we had conversations about whether Provo's system works better, we don't know, we should find out. How well does Provo's system work, kind of compliance does Provo get? What kind of data can we dig into and drill into if we're gonna regulate further than just saying building code must be met? And beyond that, we have, we authorize accessory apartments. People want them, overwhelmingly in our city, people want accessory apartments, they don't want them heavily regulated. And I agree, I think that this particular proposal overregulates. And I think just by putting in the preamble or the statement of purpose, the magic phrase health, safety and welfare doesn't change the fact that we're regulating a lot of things that aren't health, safety and welfare, their aesthetics, or their value, property value perceptions, or other, other considerations. So, I am opposed to these regulations as written, I am against accessory apartments, I am opposed to overaggressive regulation. I am interested in compliance with law and a society that respects private property rights.
Okay, and so I, you weren't the last, I probably asked for no applause at some point. So, I was just making a statement earlier, I wasn't making a final statement, but. I also agree that we should have accessory apartments in the city. But I don't agree with this, this ordinance that we're all about. I feel like there's. I think we can combat the problems of accessory apartments in the city without an ordinance. Parking is an issue, is the biggest issue that there is. And so if we have to tighten up the parking issue in the city, we need to tighten it up for the whole city. Not just people that want to rent out their. I think that we, a little bit of what Diana was saying, that we are questioning the integrity of our zoning. If we're going to allow every home basically, that wants to, to buy ordinance that they can have an accessory apartment, then we, then we're changing the zoning of our, of our city. We are not, I agree with what even David was saying, that then the integrity of the zoning no longer exists. Because we're allowing by ordinance for people to have accessory apartments. So, this has come in front of me multiple times, I haven't changed my view on it. I feel like it's a choice of the people, whether they want to have an accessory apartment, if they can facilitate ten people like Diana can in her home, whether they're all family and love each other. Or if, I remember growing up in my home, and my brothers and sisters often commented that we never knew who was gonna be living in our homes. Because my parents would allow anyone and everyone to be in that home. So I don't think we need to regulate it. We think we need to allow our citizens to do with what they want with the property. And if it becomes a nuisance in the city, because of parking and other issues that I think we need to address, which we haven't been addressing, because we don't have the manpower to address them. So, I'm in favor of accessory apartments if the property owner wants to have them.
Just summarizing a little bit, I think we've heard from the council members, it sounds like everyone's in favor of having accessory apartments. Everyone has some concerns with the language of the existing ordinance, the way it's been written. Everyone's appreciative of the work that staff and volunteers and planning commission have done to put together what we have now. There are some comments here and there that actually still talk about some form of regulation. And I, and I think that, you know, we need to kind of turn back here to the professionals and say, in, in this ordinance as we currently have it, I'm sure that some of the reasons you worked together were to come up with those things that were necessary in order to be responsible for providing health, safety and welfare. And to just allow accessory apartments and kind of take out everything that's in the ordinance seems, it seems like we haven't really listened to those that do this for a living professionally. I know those that are in the audience that work in construction, you probably also deal with the International Building Code. And that code is there for a reason. So, I, I wonder, when we say as a group that we are not in favor of regulation, are we really saying no regulation, or are we saying reasonable, minimal regulation? Regulation that makes self, just makes sense, just for health, safety and welfare, and is uniformly applied to all citizens, not selective citizens or screening some people out. As far as the costs go, I don't know how to address them. I mean, if you've got a situation that's unsafe, you would hope that you as an individual would be responsible enough to take care of it. Right? And if you don't, you're gonna have a problem, because somebody's gonna get hurt. And it's gonna be worse than just the money, it's gonna be the conscience. So if you're a landlord, and you choose not to take care of that rental apartment, or whatever, man, that's scary. Now you're dealing with somebody's life. We've had advice from our public safety people, specific as to why some of these things were important. And, and I'd like to just pause for a moment and ask some of our public safety people, and maybe Ken and Dagan, those that have worked on this, to kind of give us a little bit of comment on why certain things are in there that are related to your professional field. Maybe it'll start with Ken, to give the rest of you a minute to think. Ken's probably put more time into this thing in the house.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a bit frustrated here. I think. I would like, if you would like to have a good response, and not just an off the cuff answer to each one of the provisions that have been proposed, I might need to take some more time and prepare a report for you. I had hoped that there would have been a little bit of confidence in professional ability and review. But I, I recognize at the same time that a lot of this is ideological. And so therefore, I think we can go down the list one by one and say, well, why did you recommend this? Why does this make sense professionally? In the end, I'm not sure how much difference that's going to make for your final opinion and decision. Perhaps it will, but I think there's been a lot of review already that has been discussed ad nauseam. And it, it comes down to what is the majority opinion? And what, what will fly politically?
Ken, that's fair, and also what's fair is for you to take some time to think about the response, I think that's reasonable. I would, I would throw this out to our staff as we think about this. Our staff has had a lot of time to think about it, our volunteers have had a lot of time to think about it. And the council has been presented ad nauseam over years with a lot of this information. But I'm not sure how many people in this room that took the time to come tonight have been involved or made aware of all of that discussion. And they may just not understand the application of some of these things. And they may also be looking at the way it's written and question, is that really right? So, I don't want to put you on the spot and ask you to go line by line, and I recognize your frustration. It's okay, let's, let's take some time and, and give you an opportunity later to respond.
Okay, and in the meantime, I would recommend that anybody who has not looked at our FAQ list, where there are answers to those provided, that will give you a lot of those. And, and we have presented those in the past, and I think, you know, again, it's gonna, to, to answer everybody's questions and satisfy everybody's desires, it's just not gonna happen. But I will, I will go and again, review and prepare a report, and.
Let me rephrase this. I don't want to put you on the spot, and I feel like that's what I'm doing right now, in fact, I'm doing that to everybody. My intent was really to have the professionals say, there are some professional reasons why some of what's in here is actually needed. And, and that's not a report. It's an interactive process with the people that took the time to come and express their views in detail as to what their concerns are. So let's not do that tonight, let's do that at another time. Is that all right? And I apologize for not being clear as to what I was looking for, my, my doubt on that.
Can I suggest maybe? Let's, uh, because obviously the council has some concerns that you've articulated. If you can email those all to staff, we'll take a look at what current language is, and we'll, we'll try to address the questions as to why the current code, or the current ordinance is listed how it is. And then we can address, because I want to narrow down what, what the council's saying, because I think there's four, five items. I'm sorry, that we need to address, and we can address those, and then come up with some potential language that the council can consider to take out or remove from the current ordinance, so that we can really start getting to a decision on, on what we're at.
Normally I would fully, but there are forty to fifty people in this room that have invested three and a half to four hours that they don't normally do. And they, they've brought up, they're very close to wanting accessory apartments. There's some ideological issues with what's written in here. And they just want to understand, it's them that wants to understand why some of these things are in here. But I don't think a written report to the council.
No, I was, I was meaning that we, we presented that to the public, that would be great.
Yep. Some kind of a response, if you will, in another meeting, where we interact with those that have taken the time to come and address what of all of this is actually related to their issues and concerns.
Yes. Yeah.
And then, and then we don't end up with non-professionals up here, I'm a non-professional in this field. We don't go back again and ask another volunteer committee, another planning commission, to do this over and over again. These are the people that took the time to come. Let's, let's try to directly address their concerns.
Yeah, I mean, like Ken says, some of the things we've probably have already addressed, they're in the FAQ, we just need to review those. I think there's some stuff that's come up tonight that has not been discussed and reviewed closely, I think probably on, on the staff level. So, and that's, that's what we need to feedback from the council, is to, you give us your particular concern with ordinance, and then we'll address, again, potential language, we want to give you guys options to say, okay, I like that, let's get that in there. Or no, that's not what we meant, we don't want that in there. Or, here's what's currently in there, we want that in there, or here's what's currently in there, we want that out. So we almost go a little bit step by step. We can have the discussion so the public can see kind of the thinking behind it, and then we can get to some decision-making on here.
Okay, let me not put the rest of you on the spot.
I have a comment, I don't think, there. I just wanted to.
I want a comment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I want to. There's been a lot of comments.
Here I am, feeling like I'm putting you on the spot. Here I am, feeling like I'm putting you on the spot, but that wasn't my intent.
There's been a lot of comments about constitution and some concerns that way. So I wanted to just give the group something to think about, which is part of the constitution, it's the fourth amendment, it's search and seizure laws, okay? So what we're talking about, you know, somebody even stood up and said, you know, search the whole house, well, that's very problematic to the government, right? So if you put yourself in that situation, if, if I'm a homeowner and there's an apartment under my house and there's a problem with the apartment under my house, or we really want to create a situation where the government's going to search that whole house, where the problem isn't in apartment A and apartment B. I've, I've been on situations here in Pleasant Grove where we've served, one in particular, we served a search warrant for drugs and stolen property. Nothing in our records showed that there was an accessory apartment in this residence. We have, so we go all of our intel, get all the information, nothing show an accessory apartment. We go and serve the warrant and find ourselves, we're not in the right place, we're in somebody else's home, there's an accessory apartment and they're not the problem, but it's not listed. And, and so I think when, I think when we're, I don't understand, I guess, the mentality of who are we really trying to hide from? I think we're hurting ourselves when we're talking about response times and what, you know, the minutes matter in emergencies and we're going to waste time trying to figure out how to get to you when it's as easy as just saying there is an accessory apartment here. I don't understand that mentality map. I think people need to remember that this government, big brother mentality will remember that we're residents too, you know, and I, I, I respect my rights just like anybody else. Yes, I'm a police officer, but you know, I respect my rights just like the rest of you. And, you know, I don't want, I don't want something going down in my house or some other problem because just of a little technicality, you know, and somebody's living in my basement and I, but I don't want you to know that. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Fine. So let me, preface what I say, by stating that fire codes exist because of years and even generations of mistakes and, you know, terrible, horrible incidents. And so after those things, we learned, we develop fire codes. So why would the fire department advocate for regulation of accessory apartments? So please try and listen to what I say next and try and understand in the spirit of what I say. I don't care who you are, I don't care what you do, I don't care how rich you are or how poor you are. Every person deserves the same services. Big house, little house, small business, big business, you all have an expectation of services from the fire department and you deserve those. It's my job as a fire chief to see to it that I provide in the best way possible those services that you expect. Okay? That means that I'm an advocate of every one of yours. Every one of you have a, a safety advocate in me. I don't discriminate, I don't care. You all deserve that same level of safety. Okay? If I don't have regulation in accessory apartments, I have no way to advocate for that renter. Who is going to advocate for them? I believe you will. I think that your desire is that you would put all the safety measures in place and maintain them responsibly in your accessory apartment. But I can't even guarantee that upfront if I can't have access to it through some kind of regulation. So am I talking about onsite discussions or those kinds of things? No. We're talking about simple things like making sure that you do put a fire extinguisher in there, or a smoke detector, or a CO detector. Those are really simple things, but if this is not regulated, how would I know, how could I truly be an advocate for that renter if there was no way for me to know that that happened? It could be as simple as me sending out a self-inspection form where you walk through that with the renter, they mark it, they know, you know, and then you just send it back to us. It could be that simple. But if you're not regulated in any way, then I fail to advocate for that person that's renting from you.
Okay. Council, you've heard a lot of great opinions tonight. Probably one of the most thorough public and politest sessions I think we've had in a long time. I appreciate it.
I think we're close.
Yeah, we're very close, but there is some tweaking that needs to be done, and we don't tweak from...
We don't tweak this topic.
We don't, we don't tweak here at the, at the table with these kind of things. So I would entertain a motion to continue this until we can provide specifics to Ken and to the staff on that.
And let me emphasize, it will be very important for each one of the council members to express your concerns or questions about certain items, because we can be out all over the place. I don't want to do that. I want to address your specific concerns. So I'm going to assume that if I don't hear from you, you have no concerns.
So you email right now.
So Ken, and I just want to say, I understand your frustration and, but I hope you have confidence in the council as well as you ask for us to have confidence in you, because, you know, as we stated before, if you, I think you're frustrated if you make any changes at this point, it's just kind of a lost cause. But if we didn't make any changes, there'd be, it would be a little point to hear from the public tonight, because we could just disregard what they said and then we would just go straight ahead to approving. And our job is to listen to the public and, and try and bring that balance and try to know maybe the planning commission's frustrated, I mean, it's just, it's a very, very difficult issue, we'll make sure that we get it right. And so I hope you have confidence in us as well. I'd rather take the time and take a couple more steps than, than not. And so just know that your work has not gotten unnoticed, but we need to...
And if I didn't make myself clear, and perhaps I didn't state it correctly the way I intended to, if there's any frustration, it's just that it would be kicked back into our court to revise and come back. I think answering questions, providing background and support, I'm, that's fine. I just, I just wanted, and I have no problem with the council changing whatever the ordinance is, I just don't want it thrown back to us.
Yeah.
That's fair. That's very thoughtful. Thank you.
All right. So Mayor, I make a motion that we continue ordinance 2015-46. Do you want a date certain?
I would say date uncertain if they want to raise that.
Okay, a date uncertain.
And you want the short title read?
Yeah.
Just the top.
Just the top.
For proposed text amendment regarding accessory apartments.
Thank you.
It just keeps it clear. But can we, what's kind of the goal that we have in mind for today, Mayor?
The agenda's going to be in five minutes.
Well, I'm like hold point five, I know what I want.
Let's, I, I think the sooner I get feedback, the more responsive the response you is going to be.
You know, everyone here tonight said they want accessory apartments. That's a whole lot further than we were here earlier. That's way far ahead. So if we're talking about only including regulations that deal with health, safety, and welfare, and we have a rationale that can be explained and understood and accepted by the public, I think we're going to be okay. And, and so that's what the, you notice, I hope the, the public noticed that when we asked for this, the staff turned back and asked the council, not the public, they're asking the council for their input. That means we have to make sure we understand what your concerns are in order to be able to give that direction to them in written form. Or we're going to be right back here again having another one of these discussions. So we have to, we have to make sure that we understand what you say. So yeah, if the council's confident that they fully understand what these group of people have said, yeah, shoot that email off tonight.
So do we have a hearing again after tweaking?
Yeah, it's going to come back. I need help.
And so the, the reason to throw out a date right now is just we, we not, we're not quite sure how big this is. So once we get the feedback from the council, we'll have a better idea. Trust me, we want to get this resolved as badly as everybody else says, so this isn't something, this will stay on the high priority list.
We have a motion to continue from Diana.
Second.
We have a second from Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, I'd also like to, because it's time, and this is Jolly and I apologize if I'm saying this, I'm wondering if we can continue the road discussion to a later date just because of time we've got on the session on our agenda item.
Turn that into a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion that we move item 11, which is an item for discussion, public comment, a lot of things on it, for your current road maintenance plan, by record.
Marty, is that going to create a problem?
That is a second. Before I vote, I'd like to know if there's anybody in the public who came tonight to hear the roads playing and discussing.
Dana.
You can stand, we'll talk to you.
No, I'm going home.
All right. We have a motion to continue from Sid to December 1st. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, Eric, is there any discussion?
Let's discuss, because I, I think there are people that would like to hear the road going high. I suggest that we have the discussion tonight and again on December 1st.
Right, like, 10 o'clock at night, we've been, we still have item D and we have an executive session, and I don't think any rational or prudent decision at 10 o'clock at night, at least on our agenda items, is a good idea. I think it will give us more time, it won't be rushed, we'll have a, be able to start fresh, hear from the public. I, I think it's too late to start a major in-depth road discussion on our coordinate maintenance plan.
Are you, in this, is this December 1st impacting greatly or...
Will that change anything?
What else is on the agenda?
I mean, we're ready to give it now, we're ready to give it whenever you want, so...
Especially if you're having a public comment, we're looking at another hour.
But I thought, at least in July, chances play.
That's right.
And I don't want to put it out on the public, the information is, is to look at, without any opportunity to explain that we gave up the process of...
I can't hear him.
Ben wants to have a discussion tonight, a presentation with public input.
I'm not sure I'm committed to public input tonight, if it's late and the people are concerned about that, but I want to have the presentation at least. I think people came expecting the presentation to find out what...
I think we should hold off until we can take the public comment, because this is such a huge issue, that there's going to be questions from the presentation, there's going to be questions that we have, and this is another hour, hour and a half discussion on it from the clock.
I am not anticipating a lot of discussion necessarily. Yes, again, you opened up to ask questions, but I mean, the whole goal was to prepare a plan of our recommended way to move forward, not to come and say, what do you think, or why are you doing that necessarily? We can explain those, and if you want to sit here and talk for two hours, I would love to, I love roads. I can explain every road that we've booked out, we've visited and looked at them, and would be happy to do that, but I don't know if that's, that's not what I came prepared to do, is to necessarily ask if this is the direction or anything like that. I wanted to present to you my recommendations of how I think we should move forward for the next three years with our road budget that we currently have anticipated to come in.
Okay, so there's a way to, there's a way to resolve this so we don't spend too much time on whether we are going to come, but we have a motion to continue. Want a second by Eric? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Three. Any opposed?
Opposed.
I'm going to decide to discuss or not, so...
So one abstention. Okay, motion carries to continue. That would be three to one, or three to one?
Three to one to one.
Three to one and a half.
Three to one. One abstention.
Town floor, I don't care. You got me.
Thank you, then. Appreciate that. Okay, item D is, 10D is to consider for adoption of resolution 2008-040, authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with Heaven Book for a parcel of property of .347 acres in size located at 33 South Locust Avenue, Pleasant Grove, and providing for effective date. Do you have a presentation, of course?
Yeah, picture, build the property. So this is a piece of property along Locust Avenue, right next to the pool, you can see the pool there in the background. So the council's had a longstanding policy of acquiring properties here adjacent to the park and to the rec center as they come available. Mr. Cook contacted Scott a couple months ago.
About three, four months, yeah.
And indicated a willingness to sell the property. They have plans to move out of the state, and so we've looked at it and negotiated a price. We have a fair market appraisal. This shows their boundaries, including the little red cross-tatch areas, a little bit more property that they picked up a couple of years ago when the previous owner of the home to the south did a boundary line agreement with them. So right now, the city owns the home to the north between this property and the park, and you can see to the south, the, the blue outlined property is an older aerial, so you can see one of the homes that used to be there, but as, I think, over probably the last six years, we bought a couple of them right at the end of...
Again, which property is not currently owned by the city there?
So the green, the green and the blue are not currently owned, the green is being offered for sale to the city.
But everything else north of...
Everything else north of there, and all the way to the entrance to the rec center is owned by the city. So I don't have...
Well, funding, the revenue is from Park Act, these dedicated for purchases on...
Purchase price is $145,000.
Questions from council?
Plans for the two homes there, the green and the one to the left?
So I'm talking with Dion, recommendation is that, so right now, we rent the home to the north, and recommendation would be to plan for demolition of both homes in the spring, give good adequate notice to those residents. The cooks have already moved out of their home, just so that everybody is aware that we took this into consideration. The cooks did have a fire in that house a couple months ago. The appraisal of the property did reflect that, the, so the purchase price reflects the, the damage that's on the home. So...
So it's not rentable?
It's not rentable, it would require work to make it into a livable condition. Again, the city's purchasing it not as a home, not as a rental property, we're purchasing it as an expansion of the, the park area.
How many acres is, those two houses combined? How much does that add to the park?
Mr. Cook's is .34, and I don't know offhand what the size of the other property is.
Hey, for purposes of disclosure, can you please talk about the difference between the appraised value and that parcel right there?
Yeah, so the appraisal came in at $140,000. Mr. Cook asked for $145,000 to reflect some differences in the legal description. So the old part of the city, a lot of our legal descriptions are based on the lot and block, our own city township reference system. A lot of those reference points have been lost, and the county struggles to tie that to the modern section corner system. As you look at the county parcel map, Mr. Cook's legal description, you actually slide those green lines south about 15 or 20 feet, but it going through the middle of the house. When he did the boundary line agreement with the neighbor to the south, since that description is tied to the section corner system and has a really good description, as the county drew it, they, they cut his property back. And so if you looked at his tax records today, I think it shows it's .29 acres in size. And that's just, that's their reflection of the deeds that have been recorded. So as I looked at, as, as we looked at this, I pulled his legal description from when he obtained the property, drew that in, that is the green line, and that reflects .319 acres of ground. The boundary line description, the boundary line agreement that he signed with the neighbors to the south is the blue line in its entirety. And so using the aerial photo as a guide, we, I slid the green lines over to, to match the fence lines that are there, and then said, okay, a good estimate of difference is about 1,250 square feet. The appraisal used a valuation of $50,000 an acre, so using that, if you put a valuation to this extra land. We also talked to the surveyor at J V Engineers who does work for the city and said, if you were to come in and do this... and said, if you were to come in and do this for Mr. Cook or anybody else's interest, what would it cost? And that was another twenty-four hundred dollars. So between those two things, the extra five thousand dollars is justified.
Part of that would be twenty-four hundred dollars in surveyor's fees. There is value in the extra land that's there, and there's a delta of five hundred dollars.
About, yeah. So in this particular case, since the city owns everything around, it's quite easy for us to resolve any questions about property boundaries, because we are the other owner on three sides. And since it's already been resolved with the property owner to the south, there's no real need for the city to go through that exercise and determining exactly where those boundaries are.
Questions for staff? Okay, whoever makes the motion, I think you need to include the amount, which is on page two. Page two, item two. Of the purchase agreement, sorry.
Yes, but we can make mention that one. So, Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt, that we authorize the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with Kevin Cook for a parcel of property of zero point three four seven acres in size located at 383 South Locust Avenue, Pleasant Grove, Utah, or in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and providing for an effective date.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Diana and a second by Eric. Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very sad to lose the Cook family, by the way.
Was he standing at the door? No. Alright.
She's the sister David Strohman, by the way. Mayor, can you take a quick?
Yeah, I think, oh, are there any plots? No? Let's, let's take a little quiet there, five minutes. Thanks for coming, everyone, appreciate it.
Happy Johnny.
Well, I can't go to your house, so I guess I'll go home.
Are you?
As I, I, I wait for you to hear from, from the chief. That's what I was looking for. So it's not strong enough, and, and I, I've reached, I've researched. Well. It's, it's, it's exactly, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't. The latest relationship is a way to interact relation to the existence of. That's what I want to do. It just gives the benefit of the doubt. Well, they don't even put it on your, I put, it was stronger, it was a pounding evidence.
Okay.
It's not always.
Well, all.
That's what I'm saying.
It's funny to me, people have a cloud, it's hilarious. Like, I think it's funny.
Well, that's what it's made of.
I think that I don't like about thirty-four years out there, and I should have bought it.
There'd be more people.
I, and I, and there are absolutely. Probably gonna find it, find it, not gonna find it, that is the thing. Yeah. And that is my situation.
So forth.
My job, my. Question. My, my, like, my. You know, it brings. Roger. My dad.
It's a good cheese.
Yeah, Roger. My dad.
Tell me, right?
Thank you, uh, everyone for coming. Now, today, go outside. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to review the December first, um, the items for the December first. Is there some planning items that have not been put on there? I've been out of town for a few days, I'm sorry. Well, we have, we have two weeks left of it, so we'll. Alright, um, the ones that are on here, we have two presentations, one from the municipal, U-Town Municipal Purse Association, and then another one from the K-Nite, is that from our own K-Nite? It's a.
It's a citizen, a young man who, he's not a resident of our city, but he's, he went out and got some donations toward K-Nite programs, and he donated, I'm not sure if it's going to be four or five hundred dollars to our program, and he just wanted to do that.
Wow. We'll look forward to that. Can we put people's names on there so that when we? Yeah, thanks. It's kind of embarrassing, man. Alright. Uh, 10A, continued item to consider for adoption, resolution 2015-039, authorizing the mayor to sign a land lease agreement with Verizon, if we discussed this one?
Yes, we're just waiting for Verizon to finalize their attorney comments, I'm waiting for them to send it back to me, and they haven't done it yet, but I would anticipate that already by next week.
And then also we'll have, um, under item 11, which has nothing, we'll have the presentation on the three-year road plan. Um, we're also, we have the, we already did that one, what's the other one? Because it, it's not, we're not going to do accessory partners.
No, that's data, right now.
Okay. Uh, was there anything else we wanted to include?
At this point, no.
Ken will get back to us.
Yeah, there's some planning.
Okay, great. Thank you, alright. Neighborhood and staff business, Libby, are you staff? What, what are you missing?
Little Denmark in six weeks, Monkey Town.
So a little bit, little Denmark now, and then in six weeks, you're going to need one for Monkey Town?
I've been turned out twice, please, I'm sorry. One more timeout.
Who lives in Monkey Town on the council, anybody?
No one, but Drew does.
Drew, do you live in Monkey Town?
I am in Monkey.
You're going to be a monkey representative? Could you, could you help us maybe identify some individuals and talk to them and see if they're willing to, to come and talk to me and talk to Libby?
Yep.
Okay, maybe give the names to Libby, so they can contact her. Okay, great. Alright, Ken?
I don't know if you want to hear any more from.
Okay. David? John?
Uh, just reminded of the trial of the house, Thursday night, six o'clock. Here. Six, six.
It's here. Did you say it's here?
Yes.
Okay, in this room?
Yes.
Marty? Dave?
Actually, there's one thing.
Marty?
1300 West, Stormdrain Line, uh, they should be tying that in yesterday, so hopefully we've got the storm drain installed along 1300 West. Good morning, so.
Great, thank you. Mike? Kathy? Sherry? Sherry, you're almost blonde.
Sherry, I love your hair.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes.
Oh, come on. We have a lot of programs going on this week, so in addition to our regular story times, music programs and Spanish story times, we have, tonight, we had a parenting with love and logic class. Tomorrow, we have home buying one-on-one class. We also tomorrow have a reading to duck with a dog program, um, for kids who just want to read the dog.
I got a live dog?
Yeah.
Or you have it.
Um, apparently, kids open up when they don't otherwise with this dog.
Is that new?
Yes.
Cool.
We also have a book club meeting tomorrow night, um, for adults. And then Thursday, we have a writer's series, and we have, uh, after school program, and we have a mother-daughter book club, and we have a book sale Thursday through Saturday. And then Friday, we have team night. So is that all? So, yeah, we're busy, we, and we actually ran into a scheduling issue, because we have two meetings scheduled on Thursday, but good to have. They still aren't giving me the money.
Thanks, Sherry. Scott?
Uh, just a reminder, we have the ribbon cutting for Battle Creek Park and the new fieldhouse and the high school next Tuesday, four o'clock.
Right, did they send you guys invitations? Did everybody get one?
Uh, public's invited, I mean, it's, it's up to anybody that wants to come by. The high school's doing, uh, I think, free entrance to the basketball games, and they're going to have free.
There's a girls' game and then a boys' game.
Boys' game, and so they're, they're, uh, they're throwing kind of a big celebration. The park we're involved in is kind of rechristening Battle Creek Park.
Rechristening, like whiskey bottle?
Yeah, something like that, along the tennis courts or something.
Anything else, Scott?
That's it.
Tina?
Kathy.
Okay, Stig?
I had the opportunity to go and visit Kenea Rock's point of the match, actually good production.
I had the opportunity to go and visit Geneva Rock's Point of the Mountain, actually good production facilities today, and, uh, interesting, people don't realize what an asset that facility is, the material that comes out of the Point of the Mountain. A lot less than there used to be many decades ago, provides a foundation for much of what we do.
Are they the ones that are, like, moving it across the freeway and dropping it in the?
Uh, that's a competitor working on the freeway subject, but they're actually up about three hundred feet above where you launch at the airpark. Removing material up there, they.
It's amazing.
Distribute all throughout.
Pretty soon, the whole mountain will be gone.
Yeah, pretty soon, there will be people, why don't we call it Point of the Mountain?
Yeah, there isn't one.
We're gonna get lots of water.
Anything else? Kathy?
Want to think, public works and parks, whether it helps with putting out sunings, that the coin prices and flash, appreciate.
That's great. Anything else? Okay, fair.
Again, thank you for all those who came, and glad it's over, we can move forward, respect each other. There were some things said earlier tonight that I disagree with or represent me wrong, but that's open session, right? I'm okay with that, so anyways, I'm looking forward to, looking forward to the city, and I'm excited, so.
I'll just keep it simple, okay? Diana?
Um, Christmas lights coming on, and, um, I saw a lot of crew guys out there.
Yeah, they'll come on a week from tomorrow night, on Ninety-fourth and Stevens, with the exception of Main Street and C H B, that would be, I believe, the weekend, correct? Monday following, Thanksgiving, that's the schedule.
Right following?
Yes, Monday following.
Someone remind me so I can call Sid and ask.
What's the temperature going to be, Hawaii?
So, I thought the lights come on when we do the tree lighting.
Main Street, though.
Okay.
Really?
So the tree lighting is Monday, the thirtieth, uh, what time?
Generally about six, six.
At six o'clock, then we're gonna have. Santa comes. And then is Santa still coming to the library?
We have a little bit of time, we can work that out.
We don't really, it's like forty-two days.
The tradition is he comes in on the fire truck and then goes up to the library, I'm assuming.
I'm sure it'll happen, that's a big work.
Mrs. Claus is coming.
And then, can we, Sherry, can we get the homeless city slider, like on the website? Thank you.
Eric, anything else?
No, someone asked me to, what, is it, is it gonna say anything on top of the old wreck this year or not, just like?
Um, we're so disappointed.
We have a lot of people coming, coming after it, yes.
Well, it's been a couple of years since.
It's like the city complaint of all time.
But it's not, it's not that the roof is not, uh, it is not a structural safety thing, it's a pitch.
Ocean.
It's the ocean.
Diana?
No, I think that's open.
Okay, Ben?
I had a couple of questions for you, Marty, about, uh, road stuff, I know we didn't, we're putting most of that, it's gonna start till December, but, uh, up in the Battle Creek neighborhood where that water main was repaired, the road hasn't been, pass is still gravel pit, is there a timeframe, is that gonna be?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that coordinated, so that was last Sunday night, so it should happen next week or so. They generally try to get it within a week or two, but they coordinated that with the industry group coming to match it, so I'll just, uh, we'll talk about it.
It occurred to me, last time I drove by it, I was thinking that that was the same exact area where Questar a few weeks ago was doing work on there, and so I, I wondered, just pure speculation, but whether there was something related to Questar's work that may have caused that.
When they dug that out, there wasn't any evidence, maybe it's related, but no evidence that they were crossing at that location or something that they would have excavated at that point, their trench was not clear that, so, at least that I could see from the pictures that I saw. It wasn't there.
Okay, thanks, yeah, I was just primarily curious when we can do that.
Just, just so you're aware, that, that line has been our very long-term replacement plan, back probably for the last six or seven years. And it's in diary, if we get that replaced, I think we'll recognize that.
Hold on, okay, Sid? Bethany? Cindy? Okay. Um, you'll notice that I've, I've started to send requests to the council to attend different functions around the valley. That's because I, I can't be in multiple places, I have a family and a life too, so you're all invited to continue to volunteer to attend those.
I appreciate the, the opportunities.
That's good, I appreciate, you guys fill in, please. Okay, no plots, we have talked about most of the calendar. We will be, city offices will be closed on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Okay? There's a public safety building committee meeting tomorrow night at seven in here, and we'll be reviewing the, uh, the RFPs and the various architects.
Yep.
How many do we get, Tom?
We got six. So they're in the drop box for the public safety committee members, and, uh, we, I think they probably have a couple of days to look at them, so we'll review them tomorrow, see what, what sort of the goal, the goal will be to try to narrow that down and make a recommendation to the council, so the council can, but it's a council function to approve those.
All right, we need to have an executive session, so I'll call for a motion to, uh, adjourn the regular session and go into executive session to discuss.